All right, welcome. We are now going to begin the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. Can we please have a roll call first?
Councilmember Rivers?
Here.
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Sparks?
Here, thank you.
We begin our meetings with a land acknowledgement followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd like to invite folks to stand and join us for that. The city of Kattati recognizes that we're on the ancestral lands of the coastal Mewak, who are the original caretakers of this area. We respectfully acknowledge the indigenous peoples who have been stewarding and maintaining a relationship on this land as knowledge keepers for millennia. This acknowledgement does not take the place of authentic relationships with indigenous communities, but serves as a gesture of respect to the land we are on. And now we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Our first item is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on October 22nd. Is there anyone on the council who has any corrections for the minutes? All right, we are going to open this for public comment. This is a time, if you want to make a comment about the minutes from our last meeting, then you can come up. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment about the minutes? Not seeing anyone, we'll open it up to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Sparks, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. Bringing it back to council, I'd be looking for a motion.
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved unanimously. Please bear with me while I read a few announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, this meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council may consider the item. If the City Council considers the item, citizens will be afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. However, the Brown Act prohibits the City Council from taking action or considering any item that is not on this agenda, to ensure that other members of the community who wish to provide comment are notified in advance through a properly noticed meeting agenda. Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to enroll with Civic Ready by signing up on the city's website, www.kattatcity.org, under the "How Do I?" link at the top of the homepage. Like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Civic Ready. All right, now, this is a time where we approve the final agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any proposed changes to the agenda tonight?
No, Mayor, no proposed changes tonight.
Okay, so we'll skip, skip right past that item. Onto number eight, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I just need a moment to check the comment cards that have come in and see if there's anything for citizens' business. Okay, it looks like everything is for item 11A. Okay, so let me read some instructions for citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any item listed on the consent calendar, or any matter not listed on the agenda, that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2023-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. To facilitate public comment, the deputy clerk will alert speakers when there are 30 seconds remaining. Okay, is there anybody in the chambers wishing to speak on something that's not on the agenda or on a consent calendar item? This will be the time to come forward if you would like to. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody come forward, so it's open to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment for citizens' business or the consent calendar, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Sparks, that'll end public comment.
All right, thank you. That will bring us to the consent calendar. Yes, go ahead.
I will be recusing myself from the consent calendar since I live close to Cypress Avenue.
All right, thank you for that. Is anyone wishing to pull the consent calendar item? Okay, not seeing any. Be looking for a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we please just take a roll call vote, just to be careful?
Councilmember Rivers?
We're approving the consent calendar.
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
And Councilmember Harvey has recused herself. Okay, that passes unanimously. This brings us to direction on future agenda items. Does anyone wish to propose an item for a future agenda? Okay, not seeing any, we will move on. So the first item in our public hearing section tonight will be the appeal of the Community Development Director decision to approve a minor use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue. I'd just like to explain what the process will be tonight for everybody who's here. So first, we're going to have a presentation from staff, and then we're going to open it up to the appellant and then the original applicants to make presentations. Then we will have time for public comment, where anybody who wishes can make a comment up to three minutes in length. Then we will bring it back to the council for discussion. So that's the order of, kind of the order of operations of how this is going to work. All right, so I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Hausch for a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Tonight will be Eli Ariola, planning technician, or I'm sorry, planning technician, who was the staff on the original project, and he's going to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks, councilmembers, members of the public. As stated, my name is Eli Ariola, and I'm a planning technician here with the city, and I was the staff assigned to this project. Tonight I'll be presenting the staff report for the appeal of the Community Development Director's decision to approve a minor use permit to allow a telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue. Next slide, please. The proposed project is a minor use permit to allow an unmanned rooftop telecommunications facility. The proposed telecommunications facility consists of six new rooftop antennas contained within two eight-foot-by-eight-foot fiber-reinforced polymer boxes that will be textured and painted to match the existing building. The telecommunications facility will also include base station equipment located outside at the southwest corner of the building. The base equipment will be screened from view by an existing six-foot wall. And the proposed plans included, as Attachment A, beginning on packet page 29, illustrate the size, style, and location of the telecommunications facility. Next slide, please. 680 East Kattati Avenue, indicated by the blue circle, is a two-acre parcel within the commercial East Kattati Corridor, or CE, zoning district with a general commercial land use designation. Next slide, please, Kevin. The parcel highlighted in red is currently developed with a health/fitness facility. The project site is located on the south side of East Kattati Avenue, and there are commercial uses directly to the west of the subject parcel, and residential uses to the north, east, and south. Next slide, please. For some background on the regulation of telecommunications facilities, federal and state laws significantly limit the city's ability to regulate telecommunications facilities. Some significant legislation include the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which prohibits the city from conditioning or denying projects based on radio frequency concerns if the facility complies with Federal Communications Commissions, or FCC, guidelines on radio frequency emissions. The 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act requires the city to ministerially approve facilities that propose co-location, such as through a building permit. In 2018, the FCC made a declaratory ruling regarding small cell wireless facilities that limited local permitting and discretion, established shorter deadlines for processing and action, limited fees, and required advanced publication of aesthetic regulations. Here in Kattati, the telecommunications facility ordinance was adopted in March earlier this year by the city council. The ordinance brought the city's regulations into compliance with state and federal law, and expanded the allowable areas where facilities may be located. Then, the applicant submitted a minor use permit application for the subject telecommunications facility on June 27, 2024. The director held a public hearing for the minor use permit on September 3, 2024, and the appellant filed their first appeal on September 16, 2024. A public hearing was held for the appeal by the Planning Commission on October 7, 2024, where, after consideration, no action was taken. And on October- And on October 17, 2024, the appellant filed a second appeal to the City Council. Next slide, please. There are several claims alleged in the appeal, including that the director's decision to approve the minor use permit, one, failed to consider the potential decrease in property values surrounding the facility; two, failed to address the vulnerability of these antennas to cyber attacks and the potential loss of privacy; and three, failed to address the perceived negative health risks associated with the cell towers. The appeal also claims that the project fails to address fire safety by omitting details on backup batteries. To the point of property values, each discretionary planning permit has associated findings that are required to be made prior to approval of the permit. The required findings for a minor use permit can be found in the attached staff report, in the attached resolution, and in the Kattati Municipal Code. These findings address a number of areas of concern for the city, including zoning and general plan consistency, site suitability, aesthetics, and public health. But potential impacts to surrounding property values is not included. On the failure to address cyber attacks, addressing cyber attacks, addressing the possibility of cyber attacks is outside of the purview of the city. Security of the cell towers would fall under the purview of the SEC, FCC, and the applicant. The FCC provides guidance and regulations regarding cybersecurity, and as a private telecommunications provider, T-Mobile is responsible for ensuring the security of its network infrastructure. Onto the perceived negative health risks associated with the cell tower. The director's decision conformed to federal law when considering approval of new telecommunications facilities. As noted earlier, Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 expressly prohibits state and local government regulation of the placement, construction, and modification of wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, so long as the facility complies with FCC standards for radio frequency emissions. Next slide, please. The telecommunications facility is conditionally allowable within the CE district with prior minor use permit approval by the Community Development Director. The proposed facility will utilize a stealth design to complement the architectural characteristics of the existing building and is otherwise sited and designed in compliance with the requirements of the Land Use Code. The proposed project will not impact the primary use of the property, and existing access and utilities are adequate to support the project. As conditioned, the proposed project also complies with operational and maintenance standards pursuant to the Kattati Municipal Code. I would like to note that if this project is approved, future projects that propose co-location at this site will be ministerially permitted and not go through the discretionary hearing process pursuant to the 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act. Those facilities will still have to comply with FCC guidelines for the maximum permissible exposure limits for radio frequency emissions. And technical questions regarding radio frequency emissions can be directed to the RF engineer here in chambers with the original applicant. Next slide, please. The community services and facilities, economic vitality, and land use chapters of the 2015 Kattati General Plan include several goals, policies, and actions that support the requested minor use permit. The most applicable listed here include: Goal CSF1, to provide high-quality public services and facilities to all residents, businesses, and visitors in Kattati; Policy EV1.2, to ensure the long-term public services and infrastructure needs of the community are met as part of the overall approach to economic vitality and sustainability; and Policy LU4.1, to ensure that public facilities, services, and amenities are distributed in a manner that enhances the quality of life for the broadest number of Kattati residents. A longer list of sections of the 2015 General Plan that support the requested minor use permit is included in the staff report. Next slide, please. The proposed project is exempt from environmental review under Class III categorical exemption pursuant to CEAL guidelines, Section 15303, new construction or conversion of small structures. Next slide, please. It is recommended by the Community Development Department that the City Council deny the appeal of the Community Development Director's decision on Planning Application 2413 and reaffirm the approval of a minor use permit to allow an unmanned telecommunications facility at 680 East Kattati Avenue. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now, before we open the public hearing, this would be the proper time that if anyone on the council needs to disclose any ex parte communication they had with, you know, that it's not information that's available to the public tonight, then this would be the correct time to disclose that. I'll start on this side, yeah.
Yes, I had a communication with the applicant, but I did not learn any additional information.
I also had communication with the applicant, not the applicant, the appellant, before the original appeal was filed, but I think all the information we discussed is available in their appeal. And I also had a conversation with one of the consultants, who, just to help me understand the FCC report, there's no additional information. It was just trying to understand the technical details of the FCC report.
Similar, I had a 15-minute conversation this afternoon with the applicant, who wanted to know if I had any questions, and I did not. There was nothing new I learned in that as well.
Oh, go ahead.
I had a short conversation with the appellant, but not regarding the subject matter, but I did have a conversation with them.
I have a question. Do I need to wait?
I think it depends what the question is.
Okay. So, because I read through everything, and I may have missed it, but I didn't see... I'm looking for something that shows what the distance is from the closest residence to where the towers would be. Was that in any of the maps? I couldn't determine what that was.
It's 50 feet.
Five zero?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. We have to be real careful about how we conduct the hearing for legal reasons, so she can ask questions of staff right now, and we can take comment from you later. Sorry, just the technical details, yeah.
We believe the RF engineer who's in the chamber tonight took that measurement and will include it as a part of his presentation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we're... Go ahead, yes.
Do questions at this point, or...
Mr. Barker, can we do staff questions before we open the public hearing? Or do we need to...
Yes, Mayor, you can do that. It's typically the case that you would ask clarifying questions of staff and then open up the public hearing after that.
Okay, so we can ask clarifying questions, but we need to be very careful not to get into any conversation. Just clarifying questions, yeah.
I do have one based upon staff's report. It said that any new antennas that were to be added would be ministerial. So my question is, does the report have to be redone for anything new that was added? Because that wasn't mentioned.
Yes, the reports would have to be redone, fully analyzing the new additional equipment.
Okay, thank you.
My question was, I wasn't sure if I heard earlier that the applicant was making a presentation as well? Or is that separate from the questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and we're going to invite the appellant to come up and make a presentation first.
Thank you. I'm Donna Gallagher at 34 Lipton Way, and I'm both a nutritionist and a real estate agent here in Kattati. I'm trying to make this as easy as possible because I'm not going to try to go long. I know I get longer. But first of all, I just wanted to say, to answer that question, the closest person's bedroom window is a neurologically handicapped 10-year-old child, and it is 50 feet. He is not able to even go to a regular school, and he is going to be that close. I know you're not looking at a lot of the... There's a ton of information, and I'm not going to go over it tonight because I've given it to you in the past. I think it'd be the most efficient thing for me to do now is to read... I wrote a... We wrote a petition, a resolution for the City Council. It puts it like in bullet points. Maybe makes it a lot easier if I just read it. Don't like to just read things, but here I go. Okay, this is a resolution. Whereas, since property values is our number-one reason why we put on our appeal, property values near towers may decrease up to 20% according to the National Association of Realtors. Realtors Magazine cites the lack of buyer's desire to live near cell towers. The price of the homes can go down as much as 20% because people don't want to... Either they want to get a discount to live next to a cell tower, or they don't want to live there. And we've already had some people noting that they're going to move if it gets built. Whereas, in many communities, Realtors have led the charge to halt 5G. For example, Sonova Valley Realtors led their charge in one. T-Mobile self-reported in a 10K report on 2/20/23, and I quote, "The negative public perception of and regulations regarding the perceived health risks related to 5G networks could undermine acceptance of our 5G services." Cities have successfully beat cell towers when health risks are considered. We've all been told that you can't have health risks. Perceived health risks, for the example of our businesses in Oliver's, the Health Club that this is being, trying to be built on top of, all of these people think they're doing healthy things by going to restaurants, purchasing stuff at Oliver's, and going to the gym. There is a perceived health risk, and it may affect the business. Whereas, there was no site survey to look for a safer, non-residential location. There are no safety studies for this type of sector cell phones that they're putting up. There's no safety studies. And I'll address that with the report they're going to give with the FCC. The FCC's Radioactive Compliance Report that we received from you is outdated, 1996. And in an 8/13/21, the FCC lost in a D.C. court to the Children's Health Defense because the FCC refused to consider the vast amount of evidence of health harms. They lost. Your safety study isn't correct anymore. Whereas, Kattati Commissions and Councils, and this to me is the most important one, actually. I'm Native American. Kattati Commissions and Councils begin each meeting, and I'm glad you do, with an ode honoring our Native American heritage. What would they think about the assault on our environment, our health, our airspace? It has been proven that is a 2B carcinogen, the 5G emissions. And birds, bees, plants, and it's worse for babies. This is going in 125 feet from a kid's park. Whereas, 5G has a big data increase with no increased improvement in cell reception, and that is proven. We have been sold a bill of goods that this is going to make our cell phones work better, and it's not. But increases the risk of cyber attacks and loss of privacy. Thank you for addressing that already. It's not your purview. Got it. Whereas, the required ordinance notification signs around the proposed building are caution, warning, danger, will be alarming to all once placed, especially the gym members possibly harming their business. Here's just one of them, what it says. It says caution, and there's a whole bunch of them that have to go around the building. Beyond this point, radio frequency fields from transmitting antennas at this site may exceed FCC rules for human exposure. That's what has to go right below where the cell towers go. Therefore, we urge the City of Kattati to write a safe wireless ordinance, and I'd be happy to help you with that. It would be more than 50 feet, which is what you have in your ordinance currently. Mill Valley's done it, Fairfax, Carlsbad, lots of cities throughout California. There's cities all over the world, but I'm sticking with California because I do need to let you know that Petaluma, just when T-Mobile wanted to expand their cell sites on top of Casa Grande, they said they're not going to return their lease. They're not going to expand, and they cut the lease. It's T-Mobile's on top of Casa Grande, and that school board is not going to let them extend their... And you know why? Lots of reasons, cancer. Four people got complaints from... They had to go to that school. And then the other reason is nobody's cell reception was better for the 5G towers. So, Long Beach, Carlsbad, Valley Village in Rondert Park, Town of Great and Sepas, we're all fighting this. It seems like our wonderful rural county is being kind of under attack, but we don't have time to discuss that. But just in closing, I'm almost done. I think it's really important, again, about the quality of life. What's the quality of life of that little 10-year-old who lives at 21 Lipton Way, and his bedroom faces exactly where that tower is being proposed? It is right there, and it is 50 feet. I measured it. So I do wish to work with you more positively on this and not just be someone who's complaining, but we intentionally had an opportunity to use an attorney for this meeting, but I'm counting on the sanity of this wonderful city that I wanted to move because you guys are great. So the last thing is now, at the end of my resolution, is now, therefore, be it resolved, the Kattati City Council votes no to continue pursuing the T-Mobile project. This is the wrong project at the wrong time for a small town like Kattati, and I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your... Okay, should I open it to the council for clarifying questions from the appellant right now? Or should we save that till later?
I think typically you would... I mean, if you have questions of the appellant, you certainly could do that. That's a council prerogative, or mayoral prerogative.
Is there anybody who wants to ask a direct question right now?
I'll go with that.
Okay, I don't see any questions at the moment, so we can reopen the hearing later if we need to ask you questions. Okay, so with that, I would now like to invite the applicant to come make a presentation.
Okay, it's up there, good. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's Eric Lentz, applicant on behalf of T-Mobile. I do have a brief presentation to sort of start from the beginning here to show why are we here, like how this area came about. So I'd like to be able to maybe clear some of the air on that. We also, at the request of the city, Bill Hammett from Hammett Edison is here. He's a RF expert, so he'll have his analysis on distances to neighboring homes and whatnot that he's done, so he can share that information. And I won't speak to anything RF-related because that's not my expertise. I can let him, and you can ask him questions. Next slide, please. Okay. All right, so this facility that is proposed is what we call a rooftop facility. It's not a tower. This is not a cellphone tower. Cellphone towers are those large structures or metal, and there's multiple carriers, microwave dishes. This is a, what is called a base station or a support structure for a wireless facility. It'll be on a rooftop. It'll be fully screened from view. The... A little over a year ago, T-Mobile had approached City of Kattati because the zoning code was outdated for wireless. And just recent, this past year, the code was updated, and T-Mobile then submitted an application based off the brand-new wireless code. What is proposed here What is proposed here is the least intrusive means to install a rooftop facility. There's, and that's the chapter 1744. The project is consistent with the telecommunication design guidelines that were adopted in 2021. The, like I said, the site is fully concealed on a commercial building. It's consistent with all the state and federal regulations. And just as a reminder, RF frequencies, how they're not to be considered in city decisions, that's section 704 of the Telecom Act of 1996. Community benefit, there's approximately 3,635 residents that will receive service, T-Mobile service off of, off of this location. And further, the County of Sonoma has a broadband action plan as well, so this is part of a, a larger, larger plan of connectivity for both commercial, private uses and also emergency uses as well. Next slide, please. So the location that T-Mobile is searching for is predominantly residential. And so we were tasked to, T-Mobile was tasked to look at property that would meet the zoning code. So commercial buildings is typically, if you're doing a rooftop facility, we look at commercial buildings, not residential buildings. So this building that the gym was in the C2 zone, it's a commercial building and it provided opportunities to fully conceal the antennas. The next slide, please. So this is basically, this was in staff's presentation as well, but this is before. And then the next slide will just show you after. It's a, there's two cupolas, there's three total sectors of antennas, two antennas per sector, and these are directional antennas, so they kind of like turning on a flashlight and the light goes one direction. They're directional antennas. So the energy, the radio waves from the antennas go in a specific direction, not Omni antennas, they don't go 360, they point specific directions. In this case, there's three of those directions. Next slide, please. This, these are the existing, these are coverage maps. These are the closest surrounding T-Mobile facilities in the area. I believe all the other ones are actually towers. You can see on the, on the left-hand side is this, this existing, is a site without the facility. So you see the Town of Cotati has what's called a gap in coverage. That's where you see that, that dark purple on the left-hand side and the, right in the middle. And the proposed facility is just above that along Cotati, along, along the main commercial corridor. And you see on the right-hand side, that's, that's an after. So you can see before and after. There's still, there's still gaps in coverage around the county, but this, this provides a opportunity to close a significant gap in a major commercial and residential area. And the next slide, please. You could see this is, this sort of isolates that particular facility, just showing how kind of the reach of these, these cell sites. Next slide, please. So again, the, the search area was pretty small. There was really one main commercial area to, to do a rooftop facility. And the one that was selected was the taller of the roof. So the photo I have here shows that we're not looking at any other commercial buildings in this area because the building we're on provides the, the height necessary. There's no obstruction in front of the antennas. The, the coverage objectives could be met. This is just a picture kind of facing south to kind of show this, the surrounding commercial buildings. And then the next slide is just really the first slide that I, that, the one thing I wanted to mention too, there was the, the talk about 5G and, and I was like, like hacking into, into, into services. And that comes from, there's a thing called 5G edge technology, and none of the carriers in the AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, nobody's doing that. That's, if you think of old telephone companies, they have buildings where their, where the calls are made in and out of these, like your AT&amp;T hubs, for example, or T-Mobile has a hub, those are secure. The 5G edge is, is a thought that, that at some point, some of that technology can go out, like cabinets will go out into the public, you know, on the sidewalk. That would be closer to where actually the facility, the wireless facilities are. But that's not, that's, that's not being deployed anywhere in the country by any carrier. So that, that aspect doesn't really apply to what we're proposing here. We're just proposing a, a rooftop facility fully screened that is the least intrusive means to close this significant gap. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If you could remain, I do, would you mind, sorry, would you mind staying at the microphone? I think I saw a question. Go ahead.
Yeah, one of the questions I have, you talk about the, that it's fully enclosed. What is it enclosed by? Is it like any EMF-reducing, like nickel or copper or anything like that?
What, the, the stealth structure, the screen material?
Well, you just said it's fully enclosed.
Yeah, fully enclosed means it's fully, it's fully concealed, it's screened to look like something other than a, than a wireless facility. So the, the design here is to mimic a cupola structure on a rooftop and the material is typically, it's FRP, a fiberglass reinforced polymer material. It's a very heavy, hard plastic material that radio waves are able to, able to go in and out.
Okay. And that's required for it to work, correct?
No, it's not required at all. It's, it's, it's required per code to, to.
For aesthetics?
Yeah, for aesthetics reasons, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, question? Susan?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. You said that you chose that building because it's the taller in there. Did you look at some of the other structures in that shopping center other than that one? Because there are other.
Yeah, there, there's other buildings in there. That, that was the one that is sort of the taller, kind of stands out on its own and also had a, a property owner who was willing to do, to do, to do a lease with, with T-Mobile.
Is the property owner, and this might be a staff question, does, is the Health Club part of the same property as the Oliver's Shopping Center or is it a separate property owner?
It's a separate parcel.
Oh, it is a separate, okay. That, that answers that. And you also made a comment about the EMFs that they're not going out, that they're pointed, they're pointed in a certain direction?
Well, that they're directional antennas, correct.
Okay, and do we know, because I couldn't tell from any of these pictures, that they are or are not pointed in the direction of houses that are at the same height that these antennas will be?
Yeah, and I believe Bill could speak more to that. But I, but I could just generally, there's, there's one sector that's facing kind of like the northeast and it's, and it's, if you, lack of better terms, pointed towards the intersection. They're not pointed directly at a home, they're pointed towards the intersection, which is just to the northeast of the building.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, on the map, you indicated that there were some other areas where there was either towers or antennas. Are they all towers or are their antennas similar and are they close to residences?
Yeah, so the ones that, that I have, I don't know if you're able to put that map, the one that kind of shows, either, either one of those. Yeah, so that one's fine. So on the, on the right-hand side, so all the, all the ones surrounding there, these are all towers. These are, the closest one just to the north of it, if you, I don't know if you can, if you can see it, if you're, yeah, that's actually at, let me give you the exact address, but it's a, it's a school and a park. It's, and it's actually in Roner Park and it's been there for a while. That's a, it's a fake tree. So that's, that's what that would, but all the ones on there are actually towers. As I'm looking through a list of them right here. And they're all, they're all have, they are all surrounded by, okay, some are surrounded by homes, residential areas. They all have houses nearby. There's one that's adjacent to Sonoma State.
And are they all 5G?
I'm not sure if they have 5G. If they don't, they, they would at some point.
I had a kind of technical question, so I don't know if it's for you or someone else, but I had a question about the FCC report. I don't know what the technical name of that document is, but you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the RF safety report.
Yeah, the RF safety report. And it seemed to me like in producing the RF safety report, the, the power levels were, the received power was modeled for workers who are on the rooftop and also modeled for people who are at ground level.
Correct.
And so I know that these antennas, if I'm, tell me if I'm right, but it looked like one of them was pointed sort of northeast towards that intersection. One was pointed almost due south and one was pointed kind of west along East Cotati Avenue. So I wondered if the exposure levels were modeled at any point for the residences that are two-story buildings adjacent to the property? Because I only saw it modeled for ground level and.
Yeah, there was, and, and Bill would have that information, Bill Hammett, if you want to, I don't know if we want him to come up now or if.
I mean.
At some point.
Is that okay? That would be, that would be great, yeah, if he could.
Good evening, council members. My name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in California, licensed by California. I manage a firm of eight. We're located actually over the hill in Sonoma. A regular part of our practice is the calculation and the measurement of radio frequency exposure conditions. This has been my principal focus for 39 years. During that time, I've done 29, 25,000 site evaluations. McGraw-Hill has published my book on this topic. As engineers, our job is really straightforward. What are the exposure levels and how do they compare to the federal standards? Because we deal just in facts, we work across the field consulting for wireless carriers for cities and counties, for landlords and for private individuals. T-Mobile has asked me to evaluate for this proposal, exposure levels in the neighborhood on Lipton Way, directly to what you were asking about. We've projected the exposure levels at, at all of those buildings, some of which are two-story, some of which are three-story. The maximum at any of those, the top floor elevation is 35% of this, of the limit. So the federal law allows up to 100%. That's by definition 100%. This is at 35% below that. And we know these numbers are conservative. In the, in the 39 years, we've not found a single instance of a, of a wireless antenna emissions exceeding what we had calculated. We aren't, that is, our numbers are conservative, we know that. Several questions that came up that I'm, I'm happy to talk about. One is the direction of the antennas. Your analysis is correct. One is going at 30 degrees toward that intersection. The other one is going at 150 degrees, more to the south, and then the third is pointing due west. They're not narrow beams, they're providing service in all directions, but that's the way the maximum power level from the antennas is associated. And so we took that into account when we looked at the different buildings. Their position relative to the antennas, the orientation of the antennas, the distance, the distance is greater than 50 feet because the antenna is set back from the edge of the building, about 40 or 50 feet. So we took all those numbers into consideration and we did the worst-case level at the top floor elevation of the buildings and that maximum is 35%. So as your, as staff explained to you, and as I'm sure your city attorney would confirm, if it, if it meets the 100% requirement, which this does, then you're preempted by, by law from considering the impact of radio frequency exposure levels. And, and this facility, as proposed, will comply with those federal standards. So I'm happy to address other questions that you might have.
I see Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ford give you a chance to ask a question.
I was wondering if you could speak to the effect on, of building materials on radio frequency in this band?
Certainly, that's one of the things that makes our, our numbers conservative, is that the energy doesn't like to go through something you can't see through. So building materials will heavily attenuate the power of the signal. When, when we're measuring, taking measurements in, in a home, it's, it's, it's very evident that that factor occurs. And by way of interest, people tend to have in their homes wireless routers, microwave ovens, things that produce more exposure levels near them than anything that would come off of, of the tower.
All right, just to follow up on that, was that, is that at the same types of frequencies? Like within a home, you'd see at the same types of frequencies that these antennas would use?
Same types of frequencies. They're, they have different bands for different purposes, but they're right next to each other in terms of what the frequencies are.
I'm not, I'm not sure if, if this is within your expertise, but can you talk about the exposures from the radios in the devices we hold next to our heads versus the exposures from the antennas?
The exposure levels are often higher from the, from the handheld device. The handheld device in the old days was, was analog and it was always transmitting. It's long since been digital, so it gives a burst of energy to send a signal and then is off. So it's not on a continuous basis, but it can be higher, that's correct.
Um, so you did the modeling and models are just that, they're, they're models. But they, how do we know that they represent exactly what will be installed and exactly what will be out there? Is there any kind of modeling or monitoring or testing or, or ensuring that what gets put up there meets and is exactly what you put in your model? So there's kind of modeling, which is in a lab on a computer, and then there's reality that happens. What, what happens there? Are they retested when they're put up there?
So the, the permit that would be granted lists the specific, references to drawings, which have the specific antenna models that are going to be installed. So our model is based on those antennas, those specific antennas with their specific antenna patterns, the energy patterns from the, from the antennas. Those are modeled based on that particular model of, of antenna. So if something else is installed, it wouldn't be in compliance with the, with the permit and that'd be a different issue. So that's one aspect of, of what you asked. The other aspect is that 39 years of, of modeling and then measuring shows that these antennas do perform exactly as, as modeled. And our model and our, our assumptions are conservative. One of the ones was building materials. Another is that they're on at full power, which is often not necessarily the case. And there are other conservative factors that are taken into account.
So does anyone do any testing after they're put up there? So like you said, they're a certain kind, but they're supposed to be in a certain direction. What if they're off by, by a couple of degrees or, you know, however, however that works, such that they're now pointing somewhere else? And then that would put your, your, does anyone actually go out there and measure that?
We often are asked to go out and take measurements in such situations. It's, would be up to the city as to whether that's a requirement or not.
Okay, so we could ask for that. And then my other question has to do with, so this report that we got, it talks a lot about the, the occupational aspect, but in the, in the summary and conclusions, it does not say anything about the general public in that summary and inclusion page. And I was curious as to why, if what you're saying is that it's within the realm of where it's supposed to be, why, why that wasn't mentioned in the summary?
I believe that's why T-Mobile hired me to do a focus just on the neighborhood specifically because I don't believe it, I think you're correct, it was not in that original report.
Okay, so you didn't do this origi, you, you did a separate report that we don't have?
I did a separate study, that's correct. And I'm presenting those, those results presented to the Planning Commission and also to you.
So we don't have a copy of that, is that correct?
I did not prepare a written report.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's my question.
Okay, yeah, question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the distance. I heard you say that it's set back from the edge of the building. How, how much is it setback and how close is it to the closest residence?
I scaled it off of the drawings when that issue came up just a few minutes ago. And it looks to be about 40 or 50 feet from the edge of the building. And then there's the parking lot, driveway and little setback for the other house. So it looks like it's about 50 feet from the building to the house and then probably another 40 feet to the antenna.
Let me ask just a follow-up question directly related to this. There's going to be antennas on the two different, two, two different spots on the.
That's what the drawings show, correct.
Are you talking about the one that's pointed northeast, sort of closest to where the residence is?
And southeast, yes. Those, those antennas are next to each other.
Okay, thank you.
In that, in that cupola.
Okay, so you're saying 50 feet?
50 feet would be the distance to the building from the nearest residence, but then the antennas are another 40 feet or so in from the edge of the building.
So 90.
90 feet total. That's just based on a quick review of the drawings, right?
Okay, and what is your understanding of a safe distance?
The safe distance depends on the antenna, how much power is going into it, its pattern, the height relative to, all those factors go into, into play in order to determine whether it's in compliance or not.
Okay. Okay, so in this instance, right now that we're talking about?
Yes, in this instance, for the top floor elevation in any of the buildings, the maximum exposure level is 35%.
Okay, so I'm not asking the percentage. I'm asking a safe distance.
A safe distance?
Yeah.
I have not calculated the, the occupational issue of how far on the roof you would need to be from the antennas to be below the limit. That's an occupational question. You would, there's, there's no distance off the, off the building at which that would occur. So that, and I'll put it another way. 40 feet would, beyond 40 feet, it would be less than the limit.
Less than the limit of?
100%. The limit by definition is 100%.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So is the limit safety? Like, I'm not understanding the connection between my question and your answer.
Okay, so, well.
I'm probably, I'm just not understanding.
Or, or I may not, I may not have that number actually calculated because that's, it's an occupational question to determine at what distance the exposure levels fall below the standard.
Below the safety standard?
Yes, below the safety standard. When I say the standard, I'm talking about the limit that the FCC adopted at the direction of Congress
Right.
for exposure levels to be considered in compliance with the standard. The, the standard includes in it a 50 times safety factor below anything that science says might be an issue. So safety is, 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 is insured by complying with the standard.
Can I just say what I think I'm hearing? And you can tell me, tell me if it's right. I think the calculations that he did were to model how much is being received at different locations. And it's complicated because it depends on what angle you are away from them. The, so the safe limit would not necessarily be the same distance in all directions. And so I think he's unable to give you a straight answer of what the safe distance is because he just didn't calculate that. And it would, it would be somewhere closer than 40 feet.
Correct.
Is that, is that what you were saying?
That's a good summary, yes.
Okay, so, so then what I'm hearing is 90 feet is safe. It is not a dangerous or unhealthful amount of EMF from this device.
That's correct. It's well below the federal limit.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? And I, I was not attempting to espouse any opinion on any of this, just to see if I was understanding what you're saying and, and clarifying. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, so at this time, we're going to open it to a public comment. I did receive a number of comment cards. So I'm going to, I'm going to call names and I'll say the name of the person to come up and then the name of the next person who will be coming up so you can have a chance to prepare. When we've gone through all the comment cards, I will open it up to Zoom public comment. And when we're done with that, I'll open it back up to the chambers to anyone who didn't submit a comment card. Okay, so everyone who wants to speak will have a chance. All right, first will be Tracy Levin, followed by Esmeralda Flores. So Tracy, I invite you to come up. Going to skip. Okay, Esmeralda Flores. And the next person will be Clint Weiss.
Hey, welcome. My name is Esmeralda Flores and I am an RN. Oh, sure. That better. Okay, so I'm a nurse, a registered nurse. I have several concerns, obviously, the, the property value. If I were to sell my place and it's that close, things like that. I, I know that that's not important to some people and, and that's, you know, no here, no there, because people are going to get their cell service. My also concern is radiation. So I know that we're, say, I'm right behind that complex on Lincoln. So I'm right behind. We walk through there all the time. You know, we go to Starbucks, we go to Oliver's. I am exposed at work for radiation because of my job. We do procedures, we do ERCPs where people come. I mean, that's a little, I just want to tell you what happens. So when people have, say, a gallstone, we get exposed. We have to wear lead. We have also, we mark how much we get exposed. Not only do we get exposed there, but we have our cell phones. And now you're going to have this, maybe not a tower, but this is going to be in my backyard. I think either though, even though that I am far away, I still have to worry about other cell towers, not just T-Mobile. I have to worry about, you know, AT&amp;T, Verizon, whoever. So my concern is, even though if you have an FCC, you know, regulation that we're going to be safe, that standard to me is not enough because it's still going to be constant. And maybe not now, but I see patients that, I've seen patients, I worked in oncology as well, where Sonoma County goes to UCSF for having cancer. So that is a concern of mine. If we're having this close to home, I'm like, okay, so maybe not now. But when I make it to 70, if I make it to 80, that's going to be a concern if something happens to me then. So, I don't know. I think that's, that's it for me now.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. The next speaker will be Clint Weiss, followed by Donna Gallagher.
Hello, my name's Clint Weiss and I live at 27 Lipton Way. And I've already talked a couple of times about why I'm so passionate about this issue. So I won't go into too much detail about that. But basically, my four-year-old daughter's health and wellbeing is why I'm here. It's my number one priority. I'm going to do anything to avoid a cellphone tower directly outside of her window, even if that means moving, but that's my family's last resort. We love this community and want to raise our family here. And I'm hopeful we could work together and find a solution to this. And I empathize with the feeling of having your hands tied as a local government when large companies have so much power and the federal and state regulations are often work in their favor. But I know it's a tough battle, but I believe it's something we could work together and overcome. I just read about a case in Nevada that followed an almost identical arc of the process that we're going through right now, where they successfully appealed the planning commission's approval of a cell tower at a specified location back in August. And this was a rural area where only one resident was actually affected. And the local government got on board and heard them out and actually fought to get it in a different location. So I understand the hesitancy to support us when it comes to possible lawsuits and other financial burdens. But without getting local government on board, this just feels like a David versus Goliath fight. And sometimes local government has to stand up against these large companies, even when it seems uncomfortable or impossible. And there's a real chance succeeding when we do this together because I think we could actually see representative democracy in action. And I just wanted to end by saying, I noticed on the T-Mobile report of benefits to community, it was basically just increased cell service. And if our values are around technological advancements and financial growth, I think we just have to completely reevaluate our values as a community. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. Next will be Donna Gallagher, followed.
I eventually asked you, because you had the other.
Oh, okay.
I was like, if everybody goes first and the questions I have are handled, I didn't let you regain a minute or so.
Can I ask the city attorney about that for clarification?
Yes, you can, mayor, if you wish to provide an opportunity for the appellant to rebut or make final comments.
Okay.
That seems reasonable.
And I could probably provide opportunity for both, both to rebut?
That would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, so we'll, we'll give you the chance, we'll give you the chance later on then. Okay, so next will be Julia Hawkins, followed by Jill Seymour, I think? Okay, all right, Julia.
Thank you for doing this. It's nice to see democracy in action and it's exciting to participate. I live, my name is Julia Hawkins. I live up the street, 8635 Water Road. I've been here for 24 years and I have a long, from, ever since EMFs have been introduced, I've been, I've objected to them. I know that there are people who live under the Sutro Towers and Twin Peaks in the city who've, who've are affected by the emissions from the cell towers. So I'm here to ask that we get another, an independent engineer to do the study, someone who's not employed by the company that's asking for this. And I, I would like to know what health studies were, have been specifically conducted for this specific situation. And I want to know what advantages to Cattati would, what would they be if this was adopted? I agree that, I, I think that cell service is adequate currently and I don't see the need for more. And I would like there to be more public participation in understanding the dangers of EMFs, which I know are, the, the, the companies don't want us, they're counterproductive for profit. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. Next, we're going to have Jill Seymour, followed by Martha Glazer.
Good evening. My name is Jill Seymour. I live at Holiday Park, which is right behind Oliver's condos there. I think there's 300 total. There's a lot. So I understand what T-Mobile is trying to do, like we all do. Everybody wants better cell service or the cars and all the driverless cars and whatnot. But you have to look at the kids. There's so many kids. City of, City of Cattati just revitalized that park out there, Cattati Park. That's a $2 million project. There's a lot of kids out there and that's less than 1,200 feet from that, from those towers. And I know when they said they were going to put six towers for T-Mobile, but then they also said at the planning meeting that I was at, the first one, that then T-Mobile, if they approve it, T-Mobile could, or T-Mobile do six, Verizon can do six, and AT&amp;T can do six. That's 18 towers. How did that work? How much radiation is that? That's insane for kids in these parks. It's just, it's just, and, and I know you guys' hands are tied with FCC regulations. And it's true, you are, you can only have so much power. But you've got to work with these, with the citizens because there's children that are so susceptible, their little brains can't take all that. And I, I have a friend, she's an insurance agent. I do commercial insurance and bonds. I bonded that project, by the way, Cattati Park. And, and she owns property and she leased her building to put cell towers on top. They put four cell towers on top of her building. She got $1,000 per tower, okay, in the lease. And every time they go in the building, they get ringing in the ears. And they said, we wish, we would have never done it. So, you know, that's something. So I'm just hoping that the city will, you know, take a look at maybe a different location that's not so close to the parks where the kids are. And people sit outside of Oliver's and eat out there. And it's just, it's too close and it's too much. So maybe we could work something out. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. Next will be Martha Glazer, followed by Jennifer Laporta.
Hi, it's nice to see all of you again. My name is Martha Glazer and you've all asked really great questions, so thank you. And I think the reason it seemed like, Dr. Rivers, it was, you're being, it felt like we were talking in circles is there's no safety limit. In this country, the, what's considered a safety limit by the 1996 Telecommunications Act that the FCC is mandated to follow or prescribe is, and I didn't prepare this. I prepared several speeches that I'm changing as I go to address what's being said here. The, the levels that were established in this country far exceed the levels in other developed countries. And I think it behooves you all to look up the levels in other countries and just compare that. So I think that's a question that's, there's not an absolute value for that's been established yet. There are other studies that, Bioinitiative Report is one that speaks to a cancer level. But again, this is something you should look up. And as well, it would be valuable to look up. So the FCC actually is in violation themselves of not following through on a court order that they were sued by the, in the Ninth District. They were sued equally, not just the Children's Health Defense, but the Environmental Health Trust. And they were mandated to update in 2021 their regulations that should take into account all of the myriad aggregate radiation inputs that we're all receiving now. If they're in violation, I, to me, if I were an elected official, I would think, hey, if they're not doing their job, I think that gives us a little more strength to stand up and say, we don't have to just capitulate because the agency that is supposed to be regulating and establishing new norms, establishing new safety levels, is not doing their job. Their norms were based on a very specific small level relative to now, small level of radiation from, let's say, a handheld device. And if you all, I'm sure you've heard this before. If you look at the legal writing in your phones, go to Settings, go to General, go to Legal, and in there, there's, you know, refined print that tells us, do not put the phone next to our bodies. And it talks about SAR, specific absorption rates. These are things that were normed on big men, a big male model, years ago and hasn't been taken into account. One last thing I just want to say. People who live, the people who we've heard from who live in proximity to this proposed tower, or antennas rather, don't have a choice. So when you say, well, it's the same, or when you're told it has the same level as what's in average people's homes, they can choose to do what I do. I have zero RF in my home. I have corded internet. I have no cellphone.
I'm sorry to cut you off.
So you can choose in your own home, but these people cannot choose what's being spewed at them or what would be. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comment. Okay, next will be Jennifer Laporta, followed by Sydney Cox.
Thank you for your good questions, you two. I'm an environmental health scientist and I'm with the EMF Safety Network. We are a nonprofit advocacy organization that educates people on the dangers. I want to talk to you about stealth design, like being hidden, these antennas. The people who are electro-sensitive will not know if it's pointed towards them. There are two electric-sensitive people in this room that I know of. And estimates run from 10 to 30% of the population is already affected by a condition called hypo, hyper-electro sensitivity. People with, or ES, people with ES experience extreme pain and other sensations in their bodies when they come in contact with EMFs. There is an ICD code for this that medical doctors can use. The Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA, comes into play in these cases. The numbers of people are increasing as we bombard our environments with EMFs. As to the FCC guidelines, they are guidelines. They are not safety standards like you were asking, okay? They are based on holding up a cellphone to a male dummy's head for 30 minutes per day and that is the only exposure. And they're only checking thermal, thermal effects, not biological effects. They never, the FCC never factored in biological effects and that's why they were sued in 2021 and have to date refused to update the standards. Of course, they are run by industry insiders. It's a corrupt agency. So, okay, at the start of many a disaster movie, there is a scientist with a warning. That warning goes unheeded. Chaos ensues. Well, I am that environmental scientist. There is a looming public health crisis. It's silent and hidden, except when it strikes you or a loved one. I already. I already talked about it, hyper-electro-sensitivity. Senator Joe Lieberman, the late senator, did hearings with Big Telecom, and he asked if there were any safety studies for this technology, and they said no. And he concluded, the senator concluded, "Oh, we are flying blind here. We are flying blind here, people. There are no safety studies." The state of New Hampshire did their own determination, their own studies on 5G, and they determined that a distance of over 16, okay, over 1,600 feet would be what they would recommend for placement of these things. Don't believe what T-Mobile says about a gap in coverage. Were any drive-by tests or done, or drop-call tests by an independent RF engineer? No. They, T-Mobile simply threw up maps with colored patches, and they're telling you this is a gap in service. Is that proof? Do you really believe them? We are the people. You represent us. We do not consent to be guinea pigs in this gross experiment on our health. Okay?
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time is...
Okay. But you need to know about this.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, next will be Sydney Cox. Hi, welcome.
Hi. I used to love Khatari and coming here, but I haven't been here in many years. My name is Sydney Cox, and I live in Windsor. And I'm the co-director of the EMF Safety Network. And I make it my job to take radio frequency radiation level readings from towers. And I just want to say, there's something called the pluming effect, and that's when radiation from the tower comes out, or you should say the antenna. This isn't a tower, these are antennas. It comes out and it plumes. So I have taken readings right under antennas at Doyle Park. And I have found, I pace it off, and I know what 100 feet is. And I have measured higher levels at 100 feet than right under the tower. That's why I'm very concerned. When I looked at the map, and I saw these people's homes so close, I just started to cry, because I feel so sorry for them. They are not going to be healthy. They're going to get sick. I can say with all certainty, and bless your heart. Anyway, I don't believe that it's your job to pave the way for the aggressive business objectives of T-Mobile. I'm sorry, I'm very emotional. I don't think there's been a good enough determination of alternate sites. I don't think there's been a good enough determination of gap in service. Those colorful maps can be easily manipulated. There's been no drive-by testing to determine this. And my whole thing is verification. If you want to verify, you need to verify. To not verify is like believing a used car salesman who says, "This car is great," and you don't take it for a test drive yourself. You're putting people's lives at risk. I know you're a wonderful people. I really like you all, just from hearing you tonight. I don't, I know you don't want to do that. And I want to say something about this gentleman talking about the FCC guidelines. So I have some visuals. Here's a visual. This is part of the Telecommunication Act of 1996. This is how you determine the FCC levels. It's probably hard to understand this, but it talks about aggregate, exposure time, and aggregate. And it's a very complicated formula, and this explains this, and I created this. And I understood it at once, but it's hard to explain it, and I can't explain it right now in this few minutes.
30 seconds.
If you really want to understand this, you need to go to the FCC information and look it up, and then you'll see this formula and see how it's figured out. Okay, I have 30 seconds. And then I also figured out what the levels are for 30 minutes, sorry, on this chart. And this is the level, it's only for half an hour, 30 minutes, the FCC levels. But what happens if you're exposed 24/7? You're way over the limits at 24/7. So I did this, and a friend helped me put it, make it graphic. So this is, this is something that I could send you if you want. Finally, the gentleman, I got to talk fast. The gentleman said 35%.
I'm so, I'm so sorry. I have to hold everyone to the three minutes.
I got it.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your comment. Okay. I did have a card from Tracy. Did you want to take your turn? We're not allowed to share time between different people, according to our city council rules. But if you'd like the chance to speak, you're welcome to come up now. Okay. So we'll go ahead and open it up to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Seeing no hands, Mayor Sparks, that will end the comment.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the chambers who wishes to comment? You're welcome to come up if you haven't spoken yet.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Brinks. I live on Baytree Court, across from the gym. I've been listening to everything everybody's been saying, and I wholeheartedly have been looking at all this, too, and behind everybody's comments. But nobody has brought up the fact that where I live, I've been a T-Mobile user for five years now, and my reception is pretty good. I walk all over Khatari with my dog every day. I never have a drop of connection. I have, I wear my AirPods and listen to music or whatever, and walk all over town. But there's one place I always, almost inevitably, I lose connection. And that's in the neighborhood right behind the Veterans Center. So that's all I wanted to say, is I am a T-Mobile user. I have no problems with my cellphone service. I'm happy with it. It works for me, and, except, I can't remember the name of the street where those nice two-story houses are, but right behind the Veterans Center. So that's all I wanted to add today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers wishing to make a comment before we open it back up to the applicant and the applicant? Yes. Oh, I think you've spoken already. I think we need to stick to our rules and give each person one turn, but at this, okay, yeah, come on up.
My name is Joe Connolly. I live at 777 East Khatari, just diagonally from where the tower would be. Did Donna give you these little cards about the, I picked these up at the library. And anyway, they have some things that I believe in. The government regulations do not protect you. The FCC guidelines were written decades ago and ignore current scientific links and microwaves to human disease. Cities like San Francisco have tried to ignore mandates and health warnings on cellphones, but the wireless industry has suppressed these efforts with lawsuits and economic boycotts. Now, if the T-Mobile guy is saying that we're only operating at 35% of the maximums that set up by the FCC, it's obvious that the FCC is not looking out for our interests. And so you need to follow your Hippocratic oath and not do any harm. So I think there's enough evidence to say that this can possibly do harm. I mean, to hear testimony that people are saying that it's going to be 100 feet from my daughter's window, and then them to say, "Well, it's actually 40 feet more back." You know, it's, yeah, it seems, I'm nervous, but I thought I should speak, because it's important to me, because I avoid self, I have a cellphone I just use for emergencies. I have a landline. And, but like one of the women said, is that so much of it, you get intruded upon. As much as you try to protect yourself, they bombard you. And so even if you don't have the cellphones, you still get the radiation, because the tower is going to be leaning at your window.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your comment. Is there anyone else in the chambers here? Okay.
Hi, my name is Tracy Levin. This is a hard subject to speak about, because we're up against big business. Basically, what I want to add is that the FCC limits are exceeded for general population exposure. 35% of occupational exposure is 17 million microwatts per meter squared. The FCC limit is 10 million. So if that kind of clarifies some things. Also, fire stations are exempt from these antennas. I'm not sure why they don't want to just approach facilities that are already available instead of going into neighborhoods where people are being exposed. I've known about EMFs for a long time, and it's just shut down everywhere we go, like it's not for real, and it's real. We need to address this, and I really appreciate you being here and listening and addressing this as a community, because everywhere we go, we're exposed to this. And in our cars, everywhere, on our person. You know, I have children in my world, and they don't think anything of it. They're so used to this world that it's just, this has been normalized for them. And we need to educate them, and we need to be serious about this, and the impacts of our future here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, I'd like to invite Donna to come back up if there's anything you'd like to address at this time.
You did a pretty good job of handling a lot of stuff on the firefighter, firefighter thing. I just want to make sure you know that they used to put the towers up on the firefighters in the early 2000s. Even at 2G, it caused brain damage, and some of the firefighters, they couldn't even, they got bombarded so much, they couldn't even start the car. But in 2000, AB 57 and 649 SB were passed in 15 and 18, and then they could no longer have the cell towers on there. So many firefighters were affected by the fact that it was easy to put it on the fire things, and now they don't do that anymore. So because it affects the firefighters. But what I wanted to address was, I just want to say, at least the T-Mobile representative admits that there is a larger plan, a plan to have so many cell towers up. But I don't think it's a good one. We don't have time to go into it now. But you were looking for more information, and I thought, we have, there's a PhD professor back east that reported and helped the Long Beach couple stop their cell, their cell tower in front of their house. He, his job was to do this. His whole work life, like his expertise, that's what he does. 1,600 feet is what he recommended. And most of the cities in California who are putting an ordinance together are doing at least 500 or 1,000. So there are different ordinances. So you might want to look at that, and I could help you with that. But we have a professor in Berkeley, full-time professor, who has a complete website focused on cell towers specifically. And that's right here in Berkeley. So there, he has been doing that for 20 years on the damage to people from cell towers. And that, in Ripon, California Elementary School, four students were, had got cancer, and then they took the cell towers down. So they're, you're going to spend a lot of money putting them up, and we're going to figure out a way to get them down. So we, you haven't built anything yet. It's really a good time to not let it go all the way through. 240 sign, I want to let the FCC guy and I'll ask you a question about, from him. The 240 scientists from around the world approached the UN and called for a moratorium on 5G. It's so damning, and there's so much scientific evidence on it. The World Health Organization is opposed to the dangers of 5G. So this isn't some, you know, I don't know, just bad idea we're talking to you about. It is a really bad idea globally. I want to point out that handheld phones are voluntary. You know, anybody can use them. But putting cell towers up, that is involuntary. You're just now forced everyone around there to be subjected to it. So I just want to make sure you know that. And least intrusive, our guy over here. Okay, so wait, so it's the least intrusive. So would you put this cell tower in your backyard? So if this is not, so I asked the council, we know it's not going to improve cell service. We've been sold the gap story, which, by the way, you're not allowed to use gaps in services to sell a cell tower location. But if we're, if it's not going to improve cell service, then why are we pushing so hard for it? I just don't understand. And I would like to hear from the FCC radio frequency expert why he's not concerned about the fact that they lost the DC court, they lost the lawsuit because they were refusing to recognize the harms in February of 2023. That's very recent. They're outdated. They're using statistics way before 2G. And they're letting, they're asking to have put 5G in neighborhoods with information that isn't even correct for 2G. So that's the question I wanted to ask him. The FCC outdated...
I don't, I don't think that part of our process allows for...
Oh, oh, so I go down, and then he comes back up and answers that?
I think that's kind of how, if one of, someone in council, we can ask him that question.
So did I make that, did I make that question clear? I want to know, how, it's outdated, and it's, you've been sued. How can you use the old stuff when it doesn't work?
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I'd like to invite T-Mobile to come back up if there's anything you'd like to address.
Thank you. Again, Bill Hammett is in the audience if you have any specific questions. There's a lot of comments relating to RF. Want to touch on a couple of things. There's, with all the information you can find out there, the, we just got a project approved of the Woodside Fire Department. So there's no moratorium on fire. I just want to make that clear. There's a lot of information out there that kind of gets a little bit skewed. But I just want to, I want to back up and just reiterate the 1996 Telecom Act. And T-Mobile has approached City of Khatari before they even had the updated wireless code. The wireless code was revised. It was approved in May. T-Mobile has followed every step of the way. We're compliant with the FCC, their guidelines. We are, this is the least intrusive means. It's a commercial rooftop building. It's fully screened. Personally, I've done over 1,000 of these permits just in San Francisco alone over the past 20 years. San Jose, I live in a community called Communications Hill in San Jose. It's named that way because it, there's, it's a communication hill before the houses were built. I was recently at a city council meeting similar to this, and the question was asked to me, living in Communications Hill, do I have a concern? Do my property values go down on Communications Hill? And the answer is no, that there's no, there's no impact on, on property values. There's, I do these cell sites all over California. I've done them in Nevada. These conversations are really good. I love doing community meetings ahead of time to educate and provide information to the community. And this particular case, this application process is a director's hearing. It doesn't require things like a community meeting upfront. So we're kind of getting this information as we have the director's hearing, the planning commission hearing, and now it's city council. So anyways, I don't have anything else to add other than that. Bill is here to answer any of those specific RF questions, and I would advise to, he is the expert on this. He's literally written a book on this. And so I would defer anything RF related to Bill.
Well, this, since this is kind of your chance, do you, do you want to have Bill come up and speak? I don't know that we have any specific questions, but if he has anything to say, we could have. What's that?
I'm sure he's been taking notes. There's been a lot of things.
Oh, you do have a question?
Yeah.
Just a quick question. Were other locations considered before that was...
Just, yeah, so reiterating what I said before, this is a predominant residential area. So really limited in where we can search for a site to meet this, like, very short search ring objective from T-Mobile. So this commercial shop... So this commercial shopping center is really the center of this search ring. Everything else around that is primarily residential, which we're, you know, we're trying to stay out of the residential area. So, yeah, so the short answer to the question is, yeah, we looked at all the commercial buildings. This was the one that just made the most sense in a way we could propose something on a rooftop that's fully screened.
Can I ask a follow-on to that? Did you look at, say, the train station?
Is that just immediately to the, to the?
East?
Yeah. That gets a little bit outside of the search area. And that, doing something at the train station would typically be what you would consider a full cellphone tower. So getting back to the zoning code and least intrusive and fully concealing a rooftop facility, that's where this facility, this building made the most sense.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, sorry, one more question?
Yeah, I'm not sure if he would answer, or Bill Hammett would answer the question about, I keep hearing that towers and antennas kind of used interchangeably. So I just want to know the differences as far as effects of towers and antennas.
Yeah, so the tower is just the structure. So a cellphone tower would be a large metal, they make them look like fake trees or it could be a 200-foot tall tower with multiple types of antennas on it. This is a rooftop facility that is, it's called a base station, it's a support structure. So the intended use of this building is something other than a wireless facility. So this, it's not a tower, it's a building that we're putting antennas on it. Essentially, the antennas that T-Mobile would put on top of this building would be very similar to antennas that we put on like a tower.
Any other questions? Okay, yes.
Can I follow on to that? There was a question raised about six versus 18 because of AT&amp;T and Verizon and all that. What are your, since you've done thousands of these in California, do you typically cohabitate with those?
Yeah, it's pretty often, and most, almost every city requires that, a co-location. So the six versus 18, those are a number of antennas. So T-Mobile's proposing six total antennas in three different sectors. So there's two antennas pointing, you know, 30 degrees and two the other direction and two the other direction. So as far as co-location, as staff had mentioned, it would be available for co-location. But then if, let's say, AT&amp;T comes in, they're limited to wherever T-Mobile is. They can't move T-Mobile around. And those, their RF report would require a total accumulation of all. So they still have to, and this is more Bill's wheelhouse, but that's just from a permitting standpoint, or what I do is making sure that all these operators, that they have to work together, but they can't, they don't operate in silos. So if AT&amp;T came in, they would have to take into account whatever existing propagation or RF that T-Mobile is emitting.
Can I ask it another way? Since these are specific to 5G, they're not the big towers that you're talking about. Do you have any other where you are cohabitated with the 5G? Like on a building, on this stuff?
Yeah, yeah, I would say on a building. So typically, these are downtown areas. So San Francisco has hundreds of them. And then in San Francisco, you have buildings that will have Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and then Dish Wireless, which is a fourth one, which kind of came out of the whole Sprint merger thing. That's, there's hundreds of buildings in San Francisco similar to that. And San Jose, Napa, Petaluma, you know, done Verizon sites and Petaluma on rooftops, co-located with other facilities as well. It's pretty common, but it's preferred and oftentimes, most development codes are written to where if you're within a close proximity, if you're searching within a close proximity to another rooftop with a facility, that you have to, by all means, try to go on that, co-locate in that same building. This prevents, you know, buildings everywhere having antennas and multiple towers or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the six to 18 question, and I'm thinking of that color map you showed where it shows for T-Mobile. If it's not on the same building, we could still have, I mean, like, for example, I have AT&amp;T. So I know I get great coverage over on the west side. So my question is, I know there must be EMFs where I am, right? Because we've got that reception. I don't know where the tower is out there. But my question is, when you're considering how much the one antenna or six antennas are putting out, does that take into consideration what other towers for other or other antennas for other organizations have if they are not co-located in the exactly same space?
So as far, you're asking regarding like the RF safety report? If it's accumulated, if it's got the accumulation?
Well, because what I heard you say is if AT&amp;T wanted to go in and co-locate with you, that that would just add on, correct?
As far as the RF safety report for this building, there's no relation between T-Mobile's network as far as where their facilities are versus where AT&amp;T, they all have their own separate networks.
I understand that, but they all still put out this radiation. And so, well, this EMF. So my question is, is any of the other organizations putting out similar EMFs, is that considered, that's not considered in your report? The only time that would be considered is if it's being added on to what you're proposing right there.
Yeah, Bill, there is actually some specific thing that Bill would have, that Bill can explain if there's a facility within a close proximity, then that would take into an account if it's not on this rooftop.
Okay.
But this rooftop is just T-Mobile and there's no other operator on the rooftop. It's, nothing's there. So it's only T-Mobile. If another carrier were to come on this rooftop, they would have to take into account T-Mobile.
So I guess, so maybe this is more a question for staff then. Are there other antenna close by for other companies in that area?
We have two cell towers that have been permitted in Cattati, my understanding.
And where are they?
On, both of them are at the city's corp yard. Tribunal Court on the west side of town.
It's on the far west side of town.
That's why I have such great service. Okay, all right, thank you. So they are not anywhere near this one? Okay, thank you.
And I did have a question, a more technical question. I really appreciated that you were able to provide the modeling for the, at the third story for what the power would be. My question is, if a future person, if a future provider came and wanted to co-locate more antennas up there, would they only be required to model, and maybe this is a question for staff as well, I'm not sure, but would they only be required to model the exposure levels at the rooftop and at the ground? Or could the city require them to model the exposure levels at the residences as well?
That might be more of a question for staff.
Because I know when we got your original FCC report, it only had the modeling for ground level and rooftop. And then I was grateful that you provided the calculations.
I believe when that first report was written, the public limits were at the parking lot around the building. So they make an assumption that if you're X number percent below the limit here, if you go 100 feet or so further away, it's going to be even lesser. They just did around the building, but it's, I don't, I mean, some, I don't know the, you know, short answer to that.
Well, I know that those antennas are directional horizontally, but they're also directional vertically. So that was what gave me some concern about that the modeling at ground level. I really wanted to know what the exposure levels would be at the height of the buildings. And so, does staff know anything about that? Like if future antennas were co-located, could we make sure that they're actually modeling the exposure levels at the residences?
I don't have a good answer to that. It's our understanding that the FCC sets the criteria for how the impact analysis is done. Bill may have a better answer, or city attorney?
Yeah, I think Bill may have a better answer than I do. But the basics are that federal law prevents you from considering radio frequency to the extent that the applicant demonstrates that it complies with the FCC regulations. So I don't think you can require anything more than what the FCC regulations allow.
Is that something that Bill, do you, do you have an, oops, time check? Do you have, could you address that? Just, do you know the answer to that?
Can I just make one more?
Sure.
This application process, the city's process currently, did not require an RF report for the application. We provided that based off of the results of the director hearing and then being appealed to planning commission. Then we provided that, made that public. So it wasn't part of the application process. Some cities require it, some don't. But they all require one to be in compliance with the FCC. So they're always going to do one, but whether or not a city asks for them is a different question.
Okay, and I appreciate that and thank you for that.
So I guess he's going to do the outdated form of it?
No, I think the.
He's just going to address the question.
The city attorney's answer was exactly right.
Okay.
That they have to, all the carriers have to comply all times with the standard. And demonstrating that is a requirement that the city can apply.
Does that mean modeling it at roof level and at ground level, but not necessarily modeling it at the residence?
It should be done at any location. And they could, you know, it's a matter of judgment, how far away you go. Because the power drops, and this gets to your question about other carriers around, the power drops by the square of the distance. If you go twice as far away, it goes down by a factor of four. 10 times as far away, it goes down by a factor of 100. It's dropping very rapidly with increased distance. That's why, unless there's a co-location, just consider the one source. And so, you know, it's a judgment call, how far out you go. And I think in this case, it makes sense to go in the neighborhood because those are relatively close and it's a calculable number.
All right, thank you, thank you for that. All right, did anyone else have any further questions? Yes, go ahead.
I don't think it's for you, I think, sorry. Eric, I think. So Eric, it was mentioned and we talked about measuring when installed. Do you have instances where that has been requested? And what's your company's thoughts on that?
Measuring once installed? I can speak from experience. So like the city of San Francisco, for example, offers that as a service. You contact the Department of Public Health and then they can set you up. They hire people like Bill or who have calibrated, you know, the, these aren't things you buy off Amazon. These are like $10,000, $15,000 pieces of equipment they can monitor. I don't know how cities, how other cities do this as far as, I don't know how they make that part of their code or whatever. But I know that's, the only experience I have is with San Francisco, that's part of their, that's part of what they offer.
As a city, the city does it?
The city doesn't do it themselves. They would contract out and have someone go do like a post-install reading. I think Bill's done those before, possibly, you've done them. Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
One more for Bill, sorry to make you keep doing this. Was, I just wonder if you, if you want to comment at all on 1996 regulations. Sound pretty old in these days, you know, and the way things are changing. And I just wonder if you have any comment on the, I know the legal issue, I'm not asking the legal issue, just, you know, what's your thought about the current state of those regulations?
Well, there's standard setting bodies around the world that are looking at the same set of studies. This is the 2019 study, which is the most current one. Half of this is just the bibliography of the listing of all the studies in the worldwide database that they reference by which they come up with the standard. So it's not one study with one model of one human head. This is based on a variety and a depth of research. And so the original study was adopted by the FCC in 1996. It's been updated, the standard has been updated. This is the IEEE standard, has been updated twice during that time, since that time. This most recent one is 2019. The ICNERP standard, the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection, is the standard in Europe and other Western countries. It's identical to what the IEEE found and what the FCC has adopted. So the standards around the world are consistent. In the Western, modern world are consistent. They are based, somebody made some comments about constant exposure as opposed to short-term exposure. The standards actually allow for higher levels for shorter periods of time. But our analysis is always based on the most conservative study, which is constant 24/7. That's 100% of the limit. And so we're below that. The number, interesting, it's four watts per kilogram. The results of all these studies, four watts per kilogram, that's an absorption of energy, is the point at which the first effects are observable and there are temporary effects. It's a sensitivity question. And they put a 50 times safety factor on it. You get to 0.08 watts per kilogram. And that's what the US study standards are based on, what European studies are based, standard is based on 0.08. And that's the public limit. Somebody thought that I was referencing 35% of occupational. No, all of our analysis is based on the public exposure limit, the more tighter.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Scott?
Yeah, I think this is for the city. I thought I heard someone say something about once the antennas are there, then the co-occupancy, I can't remember the word they used, co-location would not require an additional permit or will it?
It's required to obtain a building permit and compliance with the rules are required, but a public process is not part of that.
And that's our ordinance or that's?
It is our ordinance, but it's very typical in that once you have an established telecommunications facility, as was mentioned, the goal is to minimize the proliferation of those throughout your city. So you require co-location, you require whoever builds that to allow other companies to use that facility to limit the proliferation of them throughout your community.
There's also a federal law requirement that basically means that, requires us to allow co-location by ministerial permit. So that's why we amended our code to reflect what federal law requires.
So is there a limit? Like if we say yes to this, how many could be there?
It's based on the safety standard that's been referenced in all of the reports, so.
Okay, so 16?
It's not about the number of antennas, it's about the amount of energy that each one basically pushes out. So 16 is a number that's been referenced because it's the number of antennas. Basically, this application is using 35% of the 100% threshold. So they just multiplied the number of antennas by three to get to that assumption.
So they're saying by current understanding, 16 of them would put that up to 100%? Okay. Sorry, 18? Because it doesn't really matter how many, it matters how much, right?
That's correct. It's all about the amount of energy that's being pushed out from the facility.
Right, okay, thank you.
But each new application to add some will have to redo the report.
Correct.
So you don't just get them, the report has to be done. And I'm assuming that that's what you look at. And at some point, someone gives you the report and it's over that, it's just like, no, you're done.
They wouldn't even apply.
They wouldn't even apply, okay.
No, and there would be no public comment, that's, that's.
Are there any other questions from the council? Yes, go ahead.
So Noah, it was, it was mentioned by T-Mobile that typically it's a city that would measure after installation. Is that something that we've considered doing?
I've never worked in a community that did that.
Okay, let's try not to get into discussion of this yet because we're still just in clarifying questions portion of the, of the hearing. Okay, so are there any last clarifying questions that anyone wants to ask before we close the public hearing? Yes, go ahead.
So building on that, is that something that we could do?
It's, it sounds like. It's, it sounds like, um, post-installation measuring is a thing that can happen. How it happens and who pays for it is the question.
Okay, so, last chance to ask clarifying questions. Any more questions from anyone? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing. And at this point, I'll open it up to discussion. So now we can take into account all of the, all of the testimony that we've heard and, um, discuss how we're going to rule. Would anyone like to start us off with their thoughts on this? Yeah, go ahead.
Um, since nobody else jumped. So first I just want to say, I, um, I really feel for people who are worried about potential health effects to their families. Um, as somebody who's had, um, serious, um, health issues in my family, potentially environmentally caused, I, I get that concern. And I, and, um, I just hate the thought of living with that, uh, fear. On the question of, uh, cellphone coverage, I, the very first member of the public who contacted me when I first, um, uh, let people know that I was running for council four and a half years ago. The very first public comment I got was by somebody asking me what I was going to do about Katari's crappy cellphone coverage. And it has continued unabated for four and a half years. So, um, a few people who have good coverage doesn't, doesn't convince me that our cell coverage is good. So I have spent a lot of time since the agenda was published, um, reading on some of the websites that, that, uh, try to expose dangers of RF exposure, specifically cellphone, and a lot of time on websites of the American Cancer Society and the, uh, the World Health Organization's International Association for Research on Cancer, IARC, which I believe is the body that listed, uh, RF exposure as potentially carcinogenic in 2011. So, um, and to make a long story short, um, well, the precautionary principle is often brought up as, as a, something to, to consider as a, uh, the principle should be to, to not do something until we're, uh, certain that it will do no harm. And I'm afraid certainty doesn't exist in this world. And so, um, this comes down to a matter of, of risk assessment. And, um, there are, by my reading, there are very few, uh, scientists currently studying the issue in the overall scope who, um, who espouse strong concerns about cellphone tower, uh, nearby placement. Far more concerning is the, the, uh, exposure from the handhelds themselves that are sitting next to my body all the time. Um, and it is not clear that a closer cell tower actually exposes people to more RF than a farther away cell tower. Farther away cell tower means your cellphone's putting out more energy to reach that far away cell tower. So distance from a cell tower does not sway me as, as the measure of, of exposure. The IARC, um, because they're concerned about it, did, did launch a fairly major cohort study, which just announced two months ago, um, that they found no, no correlation between any cancer, um, occurrences and cellphone use. Um, cellphone use is the only proxy that we have for RF exposure. We don't have direct measurement on people's bodies of RF exposure. Um, that's extremely difficult to do. So, um, all that, all that, I should have prefaced all that by saying, I am convinced by the, the, the legal reality that we don't get to consider RF exposure risks in our analysis of whether to, um, whether to uphold the, the director's findings. So, uh, I, I did take it seriously and spent a lot of time with the science and tried to understand what that level of risk is. That being said, I am not proposing that, that we consider that risk as part of our decision, just to be clear on the legal issues here. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? I usually allow others to speak before I go, just as the, the general way we've conducted. If no one else wants to speak, I'm gonna have to go, yeah.
Well, so, um, Vice Mayor Ford addressed the, um, the appeal action for the health risks, I think, quite nicely. So thank you for that. Um, the property values, um, is one of the allegations that's here. And I have not really, uh, seen much in the way of anything that, that really, um, really supports that. I mean, there's been subjective statements that have been made, but, um, I, I haven't seen any hard and fast evidence, um, of that. And then the next is to do with the, uh, cyber attacks. And as was pointed out, that that's really out, outside of our purview. So that's not really something, uh, we can, uh, really consider. And then the last item had to do with, uh, with fire safety on, um, backup batteries. And was, it was stated that there are an opposed, um, backup batteries or generators for this specific, um, uh, project. So, um, at least on the other three items, I, um, you know, think that the findings are accurate. Um, I do hear the concerns about the health risks. And, you know, there are a ton of different ways that, you know, you can, you can kind of look at this. And, and when I look at some of the things that have been presented, some of these things, um, are interesting because they are organizations that are really, um, their sole purpose is to stop all of this. So I, I have not been presented with, um, you know, a whole lot of information with actual, um, studies like those that, um, Vice Mayor Ford, um, ha- has noted. So that is one where, as was pointed out, we really, um, are kind of, we have a problem, you know, with the federal law having us, you know, consider that. And I haven't seen anything, in, in anything that's been presented that, um, says any, any different, um, to that. However, saying that, um, I am concerned about them being installed and not being measured. I, a model for me is a model. And, you know, people are good in doing their models, but humans that install things do make mistakes. And, you know, right, wrong or otherwise, you know, it would make me feel better if we were to move forward that if it was installed, that it actually is measured. So those are my two cents at this point.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, um, I also have reviewed all the information and listened to all the speakers and the information by, uh, the EMF specialists and, and T-Mobile. And I agree with my other council members. And I know that the FCC rules and laws kind of hold us to certain standards and criteria that we are required to, um, to look at. I, I would like to see if there is a way of even, maybe not on a continual basis, but even a one-time measurement after it's installed. If we can kind of discuss that later. That'd be something I'd be interested in pursuing.
Okay, great, thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yeah, um, so I'm feeling, I, I am not happy with the not being able to take into account health concerns that the, uh, radio frequency might, um, impact. Um, and I'm also, you know, one of the questions in the appeal is what would the, um, local native people think about this? And I just want to bring attention, we did get a letter from, um, the executive director of the California Indian Museum and Cultural Center, um, advocating for it. Um, for, they mentioned, uh, uh, improved connectivity for 911 calls, decreased times to respond to emergencies, um, support resiliency hubs. And they talked a lot about, um, native people in more rural type areas that, um, don't necessarily have the coverage that they might need. And it was, uh, I just want to offer that we did hear from, uh, this organization weaving native culture into the future. And, um, as much as I want to vote my conscience about health concerns, it sounds like, um, I also really hesitate to vote against Native Americans in general.
All right, um, thank you. So I'd like to say a few things. Um, first of all, I agree with the assessment that we're legally not really allowed to consider health concerns in this determination. So keeping in mind that I don't think we can consider that, I still want to talk about it a little bit, just, just to share my thoughts. Um, you know, my, my mom died one year ago from glioblastoma, from brain cancer. And I spent a lot of time trying to figure out why that happened and what caused that. And, um, you know, the conclusion I came to was that it was random or it may have been related to her exposure serving at Ground Zero after 9/11. She went and served, um, food and drinks to firefighters for several weeks right after 9/11. So I want to tell, tell you about my background a little bit. Um, I was, after college, I entered a PhD program in physics and I, um, studied gamma ray astronomy and particle physics. And so I know enough to know what I'm, what I don't know. And I'm not an expert in antennas, okay? But I do have an above-average understanding of the EM spectrum from my work and, and my study there. So my, the conclusion I came to, looking at many of these studies, is that they can't definitively prove that there's absolutely no harm. But, but one of the claims that I heard from a commenter today was that you are all going to get sick. People are not going to be healthy. And that statement is just not supported by the evidence to date. It's not a certainty, it's not even close to a certainty that this is going to make anyone sick. The, the worst you can say about it is we can't definitively 100% prove that there's no harm. It's inconclusive. So I, I thought a lot about this. If, if this was my home, if I lived where you all live, would I feel comfortable with these antennas going in? And the answer is yes. I would feel comfortable with it based on what I know and what, what I've read. So, um, I want you to know that. I, I know that for some of you, that will not change your mind or sway you, but I, I, I'm approaching all of this with an open mind and really trying to learn as much as I can. And, um, again, I don't think we can consider health effects, though, in our decision. Um, to the other points, uh, the potential decrease in property values. I, I agree with Councilmember Harvey. We've heard a, a claim that they're going to go down. I don't think that there's enough evidence for us to establish that as a finding. Um, I, I did look at some studies in preparation for the meeting today and a lot of them are based on, um, studies related to property value decreases. They're based on old-style cellphone towers that are really a big eyesore. And there was some evidence for a decrease of property values and, uh, very close to big, big tall cell towers. But, um, I don't think that there's been substantial evidence to date with, with smaller 5G antennas that are shielded from view, that there really is any drop in property value that, that can be proven. Um, so I don't think we can legally make that finding without a lot more, a lot more evidence. Um, we heard about cyber attacks. We heard about, um, the other one was the backup batteries and the fire safety. I actually had a question about that. So if it's all right with everyone else, I'd like to reopen the hearing just to ask a question of, of staff real quick. Okay, so reopening the hearing. Um, are we allowed to consider fire safety and the lack of a backup battery as a grounds for denying this application?
I, I do think, uh, safety would be something that could be a determination regarding making the decision because it is a use permit, right? So the use is the decision that's being reviewed, um, based on those findings. Uh, but any proposal to, to utilize backup batteries would be reviewed, uh, for compliance with the, the fire code, which has a whole section dedicated to how you use backup battery, um, power. And it is a common thing at, um, telecommunications facilities.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, can you repeat? I got a little visually distracted by people walking around. Um, can you repeat?
Safety absolutely can be considered in making a decision on use permits. And if backup battery or, um, generator, um, backup power was proposed, it would be reviewed for compliance with the building code. Uh, if it met the building code, it would be deemed to be safe by staff.
Okay, so we, so you're, you're kind of saying that, just to make sure I'm understanding, that if they proposed a backup battery, we'd have to make sure that the electrical system on it was safe?
Correct, and it would be reviewed by the fire department.
Okay, um, but the lack of a backup battery system is that we can't, can we, we can, can we require them to have a, a backup? Because I, I think that was kind of, I'm just trying to relate that to the grounds for the appeal. You know, the grounds for the appeal was kind of saying they don't have a planned backup battery and therefore it's not going to provide fire safety. Was, am I misunderstanding the grounds for the appeal? What it, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
It says the proposed project fails to address fire safety by omitting details on backup batteries. And what they're saying is there is none, so therefore.
Um, and I see that the applicant is raising their hand. Um, I am curious about this. So could I ask you to address? We do have the public hearing open, so I can ask them a question. Yeah, come on up.
So what, what's the specific question? Because most cell sites have backup batteries and this one will. As Noah mentioned, this is, those are typically reviewed during the building permit process. California Fire Code, Section 1207, CFC 1207, SEPSOS guidelines. These would be lead-acid batteries. There are certain limits set by Section 1207 of CFC that limit. You know, lead-acid batteries are actually, there's no limit to the number of batteries, but there's certain thresholds that if you exceed, you have to have different fire ratings and whatnot. T-Mobile's batteries are typically below those limits of lead-acid batteries. There, the plans that we submitted have a, a call-out detail for a battery cabinet in the equipment area that's on the, on the ground. It's a self-dedicated cabinet for batteries. It has alarms, you know, it's, but every cell site has, typically every cell site has a backup battery.
Thank you for that, yeah, go ahead.
Then can I follow up on that? Because this finding and facts and supportive finding are not saying that at all.
It was, I think, written with a misunderstanding. It was, uh, conversely written, the, the fact, findings of fact. So we would update the resolution, should it be approved, to correct that.
So we would change the findings and?
The, the findings of fact. So that's, I would say that's different than the findings for the use permit. Um, but it was trying to identify how the proposal, uh, didn't do what the, uh, appellate had identified. I didn't draft it, so I, I'm not familiar with the exact language. But if the concern is that it's not accurately describing the response, we can absolutely update that as a part of the record when the council makes their decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, I'll reclose the public hearing. Um, all right, so everyone's had a bite at the apple here too, um, give their thoughts. Does anyone have something else they would like to say or add? Every time I go to conclude a discussion, we get someone, so, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I- I mean, I appreciate everyone's input and I appreciate people coming out. It just seems that most of the discussion that was had here really has to do with, with health risks. And we're really limited in what we can do based upon, based upon law. So I feel like we're just kind of stuck there. So, you know, I appreciate the input and I appreciate the concerns. And thank you very much, Laura, for the additions to your knowledge that you have, because I certainly don't have that knowledge.
Yeah, go ahead. I think we have to reopen the public hearing to, right, to, isn't that right, to ask questions?
To ask questions of me?
No, to ask, oh, you want to ask him? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I thought maybe there was another lawyer in the audience. There may, there may be, but I wasn't sure.
So my question is, if I wanted to vote against this because of the EMFs, I am not allowed to. Is that correct?
Well, technically, the city is not allowed to consider radio frequencies in making its decision. I guess technically, one vote is not causing the city to violate the federal law. But you're, you know, you're obligated to follow federal, state and local regulations as a council member. I don't, I'm not going to tell you, you can't vote no. But if all of you voted no, the city would potentially be in violation of federal statute.
Okay, but me, I mean, I would be too then if I were to vote in that way, correct? I mean, regardless of whether the whole council votes with me, it's still in violation, correct?
Probably the best way of looking at it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, no more questions, no more comments. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll move a resolution, the City Council of City of Kattati, denying a second appeal of the Community Development Director's decision and reaffirming approval of a minor use permit for an unmanned rooftop telecommunications facility at 68 East Kattati Avenue in the CE zoning district. And with a few edits to Section 1.4, the fourth allegation. So change the finding to, proposed backup batteries or generators for this project will be reviewed in the building permit phase. And the facts and supportive finding change to, plans submitted by the applicant do not specify backup batteries or generators for power storage. When the applicant proposes backup batteries or generators for power storage, plans will be referred to the Rancho Adobe Fire District for review, and the appropriate conditions of approval will be imposed to address fire safety concerns. Is that accurate?
Can I add an amendment? If you would accept it, I would like that we have it measured after installed, the actual results.
Can I ask a question to the attorney? Is it appropriate for us to make a direction to staff like that as part of this motion?
Well, I am not aware of any, I'm not, it's not clear to me whether a condition like that would be consistent with the federal statute. I don't know at this point. I think, it sounds like San Francisco pays for it itself. And perhaps T-Mobile is willing to voluntarily provide the testing. But at this point in time, I don't know whether that would be a lawful requirement.
Clarification of your amendment, were you proposing to add that as a requirement on the applicant? Or as just direction to staff that we, that we see to have that done?
It would be awesome if T-Mobile would consider that. I don't know if they would, but other than that, it would have to be direction to staff. I mean, those are the options.
Yeah, T-Mobile would. Did you want to come up there?
I'll reopen the public hearing. Yeah. Would, yeah, would T-Mobile be open to?
T-Mobile would be open to doing a post-install measurement. The time would probably be something within like 30 days after maybe the building permit's final, just as a date to set. Typically, yeah. Or are you looking for like a, yeah, it could be done as a, as a report. So it'd be an onsite measurement. And that would, whatever form or report, it could be generated. Yeah.
Thank you. And that's what I would like.
We will close that back up. Okay. So I think, to keep it clean, I think we should, I would suggest that we keep that out of this particular motion.
No, it fits, it fits just fine in the, in the resolution, in, in the last, be it further resolved as condition six or seven. I mean, put it towards the end of that list that the applicant will provide a post-installation measuring of RF exposure levels.
My concern is we just heard from the city attorney that he's not sure whether that's consistent with federal law. So if he gives us the go ahead.
I'm no longer concerned if the applicant's willing to accept the condition.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. So are you accepting the amendment?
Yes, with that amendment.
Do we have a second? Second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to deny the appeal, which means that, make sure I'm saying this right, a yes vote denies the appeal. A no vote, and a yes vote denies the appeal, essentially approving the antennas. Okay. And a no vote rejects the appeal. No, I'm sorry, I said a no, a no vote upholds the appeal and rejects the antennas. Correct? Okay.
So it's the opposite?
The action before the council is to reject the appeal.
Yes.
So a yes affirmatively rejects the appeal.
Okay.
Is that how you word, that's how you worded your motion? Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rivers?
So since I am not allowed by federal law to vote against this, I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes 4-0. All right, we are going to take a break. We'll come back in 10 minutes.
All right, we are going to reconvene the council meeting. The next item on our agenda is item 11B, consideration and first reading of a draft ordinance amending chapter seventeen dot thirty-one, affordable housing requirements in chapter seventeen dot thirty-two, density bonuses of the Katari municipal code to implement changes to affordable housing law and policy and create the Katari density bonus. I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have a PowerPoint that is starting up. But as a means of introduction, as Mayor identified, the item before the council this evening is introduction and first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter seventeen point three one and seventeen point three two of the municipal code, essentially updating the city's affordable housing laws and policies, and then also creating the Katari density bonus. And we'll go to the next slide, which is just a reiteration of that, kind of a summary. And then you go on to the next slide, and it gets into some of the background. So the council will recall going through the housing element process in twenty twenty-three, it was adopted, and it had it had considered a lot of policy direction that needed code changes in an ordinance such as the local preference policy, such as updating our term for affordable housing from thirty years to fifty years, basically just bringing our affordable housing policies into the current contemporary expectations. And then as a part of some of our housing discussions in the earlier part of this year, the idea of a Katari density bonus came about, kind of building on some of the council's past actions with regards to the cottage housing project whereby we can grant additional density for developers complying with certain expectations. Also, we've done the same thing for mixed use. We have a mixed use density bonus that also tries to incentivize more commercial development in exchange for providing greater density. So building on that idea, the Katari density bonus came about. Staff drafted an update to the overall density bonus ordinance, brought that through the process through the summer. The council considered that and had some interest in having a more robust discussion of the Katari density bonus itself, and so asked staff to return with a kind of a focused decision on Katari density bonus, and that's how we're here tonight. It was presented to the planning commission this ordinance in October, and they recommended unanimously that the council support the ordinance that is before you. And I'll get into some of the details on the next slide. So I'm sorry, this is just a slide, kind of just talking about how this is, again, more of staff's effort to implement kind of the crux of all the state housing law changes and our commitments we've made in affordable housing with regards to the housing element, and then also just trying to support the development of housing generally, as the council's identified, that is a top priority for us in our department, to try to help the community weather some of the the housing crisis storm. We'll go to the next slide. So affordable housing requirements, it's chapter seventeen point thirty-one. Just to summarize briefly, a majority of the changes are just clarifying language. It talks about how to address kind of inheritance of an affordable housing unit if you live in one and you end up inheriting it, the resale process, it just tries to put some cleanup language into some of that. What happens if you reside in an affordable housing unit and you get a promotion because you're able to, you know, improve your financial situation? It also speaks to making changes to the affordable housing allocation more broadly. So I'm sure the council will recall, we have this reference to the one-third, one-third, one-third general rule whereby we would oftentimes ask developers who are building affordable housing to evenly split their affordable housing allocation between very low, low and moderate incomes in a third income buckets. This proposed changes would actually direct developers to look at arena needs first, and so it's more targeted in how the affordable housing requirements of any development through the city that's required to build affordable housing would propose those, the ideas, just to try to help respond to more of the state mandates with regards to arena versus kind of this more general one-third, one-third, one-third. It also, as I mentioned, incorporates the local preference policy and updates our affordability terms amongst other things, but it's generally just code cleanup, meeting some of the commitments we've already made. Happy to answer any questions if there are any specific to those code changes in chapter seventeen point thirty-one. We'll go to the next slide. And so this is chapter seventeen point thirty-two, essentially getting into the actual density bonus section of the discussion. There's not a lot of code change proposed in the density bonus section. It is to create the Katari density bonus, we add one paragraph to this section, but the council in providing direction to staff regarding the desire to have a more robust discussion, asked staff to identify kind of some of the most common incentives and concessions that are utilized through the state density bonus program. And generally, those are height limits, the open space requirements, both private and public, and then some architectural design flexibility. So there's a lot of design criteria with regards to multifamily housing, and invariably, a project doesn't want to comply with one of those, whether it's the articulation, the roof type, those types of things. Parking and lot coverage would have been on this list, but the council has already made some changes to try to reduce some of those requirements. When we did the Plex housing ordinance, we adopted the density bonus parking standards across the whole city, and we also took out pavement from the lot coverage calculation, which makes it a lot easier to comply. So staff identified in the report that those aren't typically or often going to be used as things that developers are requesting concessions from not complying with. Generally, it's going to be height limit, open space, and some of the architectural design from the staff standpoint. I'm going to not get into a lot of specifics with regards to the state density bonus law, but I will just remind the council that the city requires any project over nine units to provide fifteen percent of their housing as affordable housing. Under state density bonus law, when you provide fifteen percent of your homes as very low income, you automatically qualify for a fifty percent density bonus. So that's where the idea kind of came together, where using an incentive that would allow more than fifty percent could be utilized by the city to try to encourage developers to stick with our design standards and provide them not only incentives for more housing, but then also to work with us rather than just using their rights to incentives and concessions they have under state density bonus law. The language that's drafted does include language shall. So as we get into the actual language, just it it's trying to provide some certainty, because that's one of the other kind of balances that the council needs to make is, right now, the developer has a right to use state density bonus law. So if we were to make the Katari density bonus overly uncertain, then they may not choose to do it because they have this other path that is guaranteed. So just something to be thoughtful about. And then lastly, I think the, or two things, I would say, the affordability percentage and level. So in the proposed language, it says twenty-five percent of the units are required to be very low income for up to a hundred percent density bonus at level spread across the income categories based on arena. I picked twenty-five percent because a recent change to state law actually is now allowing folks to get to a hundred percent density bonus under state law. That was not common. Staff provided a summary of that in the packet through the stacking mechanism whereby a developer provides fifteen percent of their units as very low income, and then another fifteen percent of their units as moderate income, they are now able to take advantage of the state hundred percent density bonus law under AB twelve eighty-seven. So just know that that is out there. It was another wrinkle that's come up since we previously discussed this as an option. So staff was looking at something that would get to the hundred percent, up to a hundred percent, still be more beneficial to developers than the options under state law, and then also still meet the arena needs that the city has. And then lastly, in the language that's before the council, this is the Katari density bonus program, it specifies that developers shall be, projects shall be entitled to receive two incentives, concessions or waivers from the standards. That number is absolutely able to be changed by council, but it is something else the council should balance, whether to set an actual limit on how many incentives, concessions or waivers can be used, not allow any at all, allow, maybe not have a limit, just to try to be more in keeping with state density bonus law. That's kind of before the council and something that you all should consider. And with that, we'll go on to the next slide, which is a summary of the planning commission. I'm sorry, there's a discussion of how this project does comply with the general plan. Lots of planning policies support doing this. We'll go to the next slide, which talks about the environmental review. We're essentially leaning on the general plan analysis, which anticipates a large number of homes being built in Katari. Staff feels this is consistent with the general plan EIR, so we're leaning on that for the environmental analysis for this ordinance, should the council choose to pass it. And then the next slide talks about the planning commission's recommendation. In reviewing this ordinance, they did vote unanimously to approve it, but they had some recommendations for the council, the primary one being consider limitations on the maximum height allowed by any Katari density bonus project. Of all the concessions and incentives that the planning commission was aware of, height was the one that they felt was the most concerning to the community. So one option would be, rather than saying two incentives or concessions, just to say you cannot be greater than four stories, or some some type of maximum height to take advantage of Katari density bonus, something to consider. But the commission did want the council to consider limitations on maximum height, prioritizing health and safety elements when reviewing concessions and incentives, or the allowance of them, and then also considering conducting a one-year review of the ordinance, just to come back and see how we're doing, work when we make changes, and then also address any unintended consequences, which inevitably happen anytime the government changes the rules. And with that, we'll go to the recommendation, which is the planning commission is recommending that the council review the draft ordinance, providing you feedback to staff on changes, and conduct a first reading to amend chapter seventeen point thirty-one and seventeen point thirty-two of the municipal code. And the last slide just says my name and contact in case anybody in the public needs it, but I am available for any questions.
All right, thank you. I have some questions. Just can you clarify how many incentives, preface this, I was reading in the attached, stuff attached online, there was a comment letter that was received from Scott Moss. Can you tell me who they are and a little bit about that?
Yeah, so in the council's direction to get some input from developers, Scott Moss is an architect who had reached out to us around the time, and he says, hey, I'm being hired by a property owner to look at a project here in town. And I said, great. By the way, we have this thing that you're not aware of, kind of going through the process, so I'll make you aware of it. And the councils would love to hear some input from people who are actually on the ground doing this work. So if you want to add anything, and that was Scott Moss, just a random architect who happens to be considering a project in Katari right now.
Okay, great. So in his commentary, he said that the state density bonus limits incentives, but has unlimited waivers. Can you just clarify, like, what kinds of incentives the city gives, or what we would envision as an incentive? And also, how much does the, how many incentives is it limited to in the state program?
So I would just say, when I've spoken with you in the past, and I speak with other people, the use of incentives, concessions and waivers is essentially unlimited. So yes, there is a formula in state density bonus code that says you're limited to X number of incentives based on the affordability levels and the number of units you're providing.
But what, can you just like, just give an example of what an incentive would be?
Well, that's what I was getting to. So an incentive is something that the developer says, I need in order to construct the, to save, save the funding, trying to think of the correct wording. Basically, it's financially tied to the viability of the project. Concessions and waivers have similar language, but they are less directly tied to the affordability of constructing the below market rate units. When you really boil it down to it, because you look at how this, how we're required to apply this law, the city would be required to financially prove the developer statement is incorrect on any of them. What that really results in is it's an unlimited number of concessions, waivers and incentives from the staff perspective. So rather than get into the nuances of each, and I can provide that information if council wants me to, I resisted attaching a legal primer on state density bonus law to this item because it's a lot there, and it gets into all of this. Staff's summary is that there's not enough distinction between incentives, concessions and waivers to make a thorough discussion of them worth the time.
Okay, well, Scott seemed to think that there was a difference between the incentives and the and the waivers. So
I can, I mean, I can get you the, I can get you the definition right now.
I just feel like I want to understand that because, you know, I want to take, take that feedback into consideration, yeah.
Well, I was just going to check. I read that, I read incentives as things like fee waivers, where we directly financially support the project versus waivers from standards like height or open space. And I'm not sure what the third one is. And so I'm curious whether that's an accurate distinction between incentives and waivers.
And he defined it as incentives are financial constraints and waivers are physical constraints.
Exactly. Yeah, so that's
That's how he defined it.
And so, but the distinction is, if a physical constraint is needed to be waived in order to reduce the cost of the project enough to fund it, then we're required to grant it. If, so it's, when you really get into how it gets applied, then it's somewhat of just a semantics exercise from the staff perspective.
And you stated, I believe, that it's the city has to, to prove that it will have that impact. And I think that it feels like that, that you're kind of have no data or information to do that, since the developer is not sharing his numbers. So how could you disprove something if they're not going to give you the data that you'd be able to use to say, no, that will or that won't impact it? Because they don't share any of their numbers.
Absolutely correct.
So you're, you're kind of
So I have
It's not possible.
I have the definitions right here. So incentives and concessions, and I could find a better one, but this is just the first one. Developers can receive reductions in development standards such as parking requirements, setbacks and lot size, and receive approval for mixed use zoning if it's compatible with the project. So that's briefly under incentives and concessions. Waivers, local governments must waive development standards that would prevent the project from being constructed with the additional density and incentives. So I mean, it's, you know, there was a practitioners who wrote this legislation.
But just to, to, just to clarify, right now, a developer who meets the fifteen percent moderate and fifteen percent low income, very low, is entitled to a hundred percent density bonus with unlimited waivers?
Correct.
Okay. So if we want, just to make sure, if they already can have all those waivers. So what we're deciding is, can we create a program that's enticing enough to them that they would choose that instead of what they're already entitled to?
Sure, that's exactly right.
Okay.
And I guess I kind of looked at it, you know, another way. I had to actually put numbers, numbers to paper, and I kind of used the example of the project that we had, the hundred and twenty-six units that that we went through. So with with that one, we got the fifteen percent, which was twelve affordable units. So that's what we got out of that. So with AB twelve eighty-seven, that same project, if they'd have done the very low and moderate, we would have gotten twelve very low and twelve moderate, or twenty-four, what would be called affordable units, and they would get unlimited concessions. So with this Katari one, if I looked at it, basically, it would be twenty affordable units. And the mix, it gets questionable here, but if we did six low, or six very low, seven low, and seven moderate, but we would get twenty, but then they only get two concessions. So it kind of depends, you know, kind of what is enticing for them. So having to build twenty-four versus twenty- having to build 24 versus 20 might be, which is, I think, what he said in that thing, it might be enticing enough, because it's four less units in the affordable that they would have to build. And since the concessions keep all going away anyways, that might, that might work. But I had to do real numbers, because
I should have done that for you all. That's a great way to think about it.
Vagaries.
Can I, so in both of those, the applicant would have the same total number of units allowed?
168. Right. Yeah.
Okay.
Question, could we, would it be workable in this framework to require that the height match whatever's required in the underlying zoning? And that, that, that's not a, not something that can be waived?
So that absolutely
If that's truly the thing that's most important to us, we could say unlimited waivers except not the height.
So that is absolutely something the council could do. I will say, our, our height limits are fairly low, so 35 feet. And to be able to get a, a project as dense as we're thinking, it may need four stories, which you can't really get with 35 feet. So.
Yeah. I mean, along those lines, I, I think that that, that was what was concerning me, the way it was worded, such projects shall be entitled to receive two incentives, concessions, or waivers. And when we talk about the height one, that seems a little bit vague, because haven't we had situations where there is kind of not set in stone whether adding stories is one concession or multiple concessions?
That's a good point. So
So if, if we could end up with them getting five more stories added on.
Because saying a height increase doesn't dictate what it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But people are, people are entitled to that now, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, somebody who's doing a density bonus project is allowed to get extra height as an incentive concession.
But is it one? Or if they want five more stories, is it five?
I think that's unsettled law.
That is unsettled.
And I would bet it works out to where a height increase doesn't reflect the stories. So if the, if the height max is 35 feet, and they need to go to 55, that's one. I would, I bet that's where it's going to go. I don't know if you, the attorney is nodding his
That's a bit of speculation, but I would tend to agree that that would, that, that's the most likely outcome on a situation like that. Would it be possible to write in ours, that, that if you use one of those concessions, waivers on height, that it's a maximum of 15 additional feet above the underlying zoning or something like that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this is, this is our thing. This is Kattati's unique policy. So we can have whatever we want.
Yeah. And I'm trying to balance the, like, because they already have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm getting into conversation.
Did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand up.
No, I think it's discussion. I'll wait.
Another question. So in your presentation, you said that we're, you're wanting to move away from the third, third, third?
Yeah. So it's just, right now, we're seeing a lot of these 15% density bonus projects come in at, with very low income. So I think we're going to overshoot our very low income RINA target. And then also, every time a project is approved or built, our RINA needs are going to change slightly based on the units that that project builds. So it seems to me that the city should try to incentivize and also direct people looking at what types of homes to build, to build more of our RINA needs versus just taking advantage of the density bonus formula.
But when you, the way this is worded, so everyone could come in and just do moderate, because you say that, that it's based upon our RINA needs. And moderates are, but we've been stuck for years and years and years, not getting the very low and low done. And if, if we kind of leave it open, rather than spread, if we leave it open to them just looking at our numbers, they, couldn't they just come in and, and want to just do the moderates? And leave the last guy in stuck with the, with the low, which is kind of where we're at?
Well, we could definitely tighten up the language if there's concern that it's too open ended to be specific enough. But I do think, I mean, we could change it very slightly, like outstanding RINA allocation, or something to be more specific to say, you have to, it's not just, there's RINA for moderate, so I'm going to do all moderate. It's towards targeted to meet the numbers.
But the way you stated it, it sounded like they just, I'm sorry, packet page 99? The way it was stated, it's, if you're moving away from, from dictating that, if they look at what our RINA needs are, first people coming in are going to go after what makes them the most money, last people in.
Well, so, so first of all, I think most people are going to probably stick with the state density bonus law.
Okay.
So, so we're, and the easiest one to get there is very low income, because you already have to provide 15% of your units at, as affordable housing.
Okay.
For our inclusionary, that's a mandate. And so then you're like, I already have to do 15%. And you look at that formula that's included, or the table that's included as an attachment, and it'll show 15%, very low, gets me 50% density bonus under state law, I get unlimited concessions and waivers. That's the path I'm going.
But, but put another way, though, this says, if you do 25%, if they do 25% of moderate, then they get 100%.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I, I think I'm hearing from Noah, and tell me if this is correct, that your intention with this was to spread it out?
Absolutely.
And then, okay, so that's the intent.
Okay.
And then, level spread across. Yeah, it says level spread across. And then I'm hearing from you concerned that that language is not doing, you're worried it's not doing the intention?
Well, in the presentation, it said that, that they wanted to move away from the spread across.
I think, no, I think the president, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah.
So I'm trying to move, so the code spreads across affordability by a third, a third, a third, not specifying targeting it. So there could be a situation where we have fully met our RINA needs for very low income. So then if somebody comes in and builds a third of their below market rate units as, as very low income, that's not going to meet the state's expectation, not going to help us meet the state's expectations. So the goal is, as you fill up your one category, that's no longer on the table for what you're building, if that makes sense. I should have used numbers to, to have a better example.
Okay.
Well, I was just, so I read this as, it, it doesn't have the word proportionally in there, but we could, it says affordable housing at income levels spread across very low, low, and moderate income categories based on the city's remaining RINA, remaining allocation. So if, you know, maybe just something like spread proportionally across based on the remaining RINA, that would, that would do it. But it's not about going away from spread. It's about making the spread matching the remaining need in the RINA allocation. That's my understanding.
Yeah, that, that I would agree with, but that, that was what I was, yeah, that's what I was
Okay. Other questions?
One more, having to do with, it says, the city council shall grant up to 100%.
So there's instances where somebody may come in and say, oh, I only need a 75% or a 65%, because again, it's, it's densities based on units per acre. So then, what I'm imagining is this is really going to be helpful in a, a infill site, and you just may not be able to fit all the needs for, you know, X amount of open space, X amount of parking spaces, X amount of this and that on some of our limited sites. So it's up to 100, but it's, it's just giving that flexibility that you could do Kattati density bonus and get 65% or even less than the 50, depending on what the needs of the project are.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Yes, good.
Are they allowed to get both?
No.
Okay. And then that's explicitly stated in here somewhere?
You know, I don't know that it is. It's its own, if you look at the density bonus whole chapter, which I didn't provide, it's
It says it there.
It's pages and pages of different ways to get a density bonus, and this becomes its own kind of separate section of that part of the code.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was explicitly stated somewhere. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Yes.
Just a question on what we're being asked to do today. So the red line is all of 17.31. But the, the title is consideration of draft ordinance amending 1731 and 1732. So, so is the proposal that we actually take your draft language in the staff report and, and introduce it as a new 1732?
It would just be one new section into the whole body of 1732. And so if you, the actual ordinance itself that's attached says, and insert this into this section as this area, it says where to put it. But no other changes to the density bonus part of the code would be made.
Got it.
Because we just updated that a couple of months ago.
Okay. Who else has a question? Do you need a minute? I see people thinking hard. Yeah. Question. Go ahead.
I had a question on page 122, where it talks about local preference. And it says, number three, are members of a local Native American tribe, including the Federated Indians? Does it matter if they're affiliated or unaffiliated, as long as they're local?
Well, that's the language that we created, or we wrote that when we created the, the local preference policy. I, I think I'm not familiar enough with the, with all of the local tribes, just know if there are some that are unorganized or unaffiliated that wouldn't meet that definition. The goal is that it is, if you're a member of a local tribe that was from this area, you are given a little bit higher preference.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's my understanding that quite a few people with tribal affiliation are not federally recognized tribes, especially
That's absolutely right.
Locals. So I don't know if we can change the language of that to focus more on local rather than federally recognized?
Well, it doesn't really say federally recognized.
What, what page are you looking at?
122. So it kind of leaves it more general, I think.
Yeah.
The way it's written, this is, are members of a local Native American tribe, including the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, but it doesn't say affiliated or unaffiliated. So it leaves it more general.
Where do you?
122.
I'm on 122, but I'm not seeing it.
Section C.
Oh, okay. The red light?
The red light.
Yeah.
And so just as a reminder, we wrote this language when we did the housing element, and this is just codifying it. And we did get input from Great Rancheria and I'm not sure if we spoke to the other organization that we worked with. I don't think so at that time. I don't think so.
So let me just clarify, because I, I like this question too, Sylvia. This, are members of a local Native American tribe? So they don't have, there's no proof that's required for that, correct?
Well, we would ask for some type of way to document that they are a member of the tribe, but it's not, does not require that they're federally recognized tribe.
Yeah, there are some tribes here that are not federally recognized, but they still identify themselves, and they have leadership, but they're just not federally recognized.
Right. I'm just, I'm just a little concerned about the member of, like, what that means. Right? Like, if you're a descendant of the Coast Mewoc, and you're not a member of the Great Rancheria, you know, how does that, how would they prove that? For example?
Yeah. I don't have a good answer for you.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure we're not excluding people like that.
Yeah. And the goal is, is obviously to be as supportive of folks who have tribal history as possible, tribal ancestry.
One very minor question. On the next page, packet page 123 in section 1731090, the resale price, I think too many words got crossed out, because it's, it says, the maximum sales price permitted on resale of an exclusionary unit designated for owner occupancy shall be the rate of increase. A price can't be a rate of increase. So it should just go to, shall be the seller's lawful purchase price increased by the rate of increase of very immediate.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm wondering if it could say something like, are members of, and/or descendants of a local Native American tribe?
So again, this, this local preference policy already exists other places. So I would say if the council's interested in rewriting this, it's not part of this item.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be something to think of as a future, future agenda item, if we wanted to revisit, because I'm sure it lives in many different places within the code. So we'd want to systematically
It's in the housing element. And so it's kind of above the code, providing direction down to be, so this is the implementation of that. And we would want to spend more time with it than just wordsmithing here tonight.
Absolutely. I just want to make sure that, because I just hadn't noticed this before. And I feel like it's important to talk about ancestry, not just membership.
Yeah. I don't think, as it's currently written, I don't think it excludes anyone right now. But if, if the council wanted to have that conversation, we'd have to really dig into the mechanics of how someone actually administers this, when there are screening applicants for rentals.
Perfect. Thank you.
Right. Who else has a question? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Let's go ahead and go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on this item, please use the raise hand icon. Seeing no hands, that will end Zoom public comment. Thank you, Mayor Sparks.
All right. Is there anyone in the chambers wishing to comment? Okay. Not seeing any. We'll close the public comment, and I'll bring it back for discussion. Kind of got an idea of where the discussion was going, but let's go ahead and, does anyone want to start us off? Okay. Well, I'll start us off then. I think that the, since, since developers are already entitled to so much under the state density bonus law, I think that if we want this to actually be used, we should decide which concessions, waivers, incentives, whatever they are, we do not want to grant, we should exclude those, and then we should give unlimited waivers other than that to match the state law. Because I think if we, if we limit the number, I, I think if we limit the number of concessions and waivers too, too much, developers are just going to go the other route, and they're going to build very low and moderate, and they're going to get the 100% bonus, and they're going to build, they're building as tall as they want, because they're entitled to do that. So if the priority, going back to the planning commission's recommendations, if the community's priority is to limit height, I think one way to achieve that would be to limit the height, figure out what other concessions we really don't want to give, limit those, allow unlimited waivers besides that, and call it a day. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at right now. Yeah. Go ahead. I saw your hand first.
I'd be okay with that approach. I think limiting to the, the height of the underlying zoning district would mean nobody could do this.
Yeah.
So I think we'd have to at least say 15 feet or something like that, to get an extra floor on it and make it possible. And that's preferable to me to the, as high as you want, with 100% density bonus in the state program. So I like that approach. I'm curious whether, maybe we don't have enough data about whether projects typically use more than two waivers. I mean, is it, do people come in with 20 waivers typically to try to, waivers, concessions, et cetera?
That's a good question. It all depends kind of on how we interpret them as well. So I think, as an example, Kattati Village 1, I think they requested one waiver. Kattati Village 2, I think we had tallied eight concessions, waivers, or incentives. But again, it's somewhat staff's interpretation, it's somewhat, you know, so it's kind of up to, I don't think we have enough data, to your point, to have a great answer on that. We know parking absolutely We know parking absolutely would be one, but people are taking advantage of state density bonus parking. City's already adopted that, so we know that's not going to be an issue. Or we're not going to want to go lower than that anyway, frankly. And then I think height is a good place to be. The one other thing would be, I think, you know, some minor building architecture changes. Is that really a big deal? You know, I think we wouldn't know that until we saw it. But the amount of open space is pretty significant on these projects. Because you're required to build basically a private open space of some type, so a patio or some and then also a public kind of open space of some type. So that could be one where the they could run into an issue of being able to meet it. Frankly, on some of the smaller infill sites especially. And that's where I see this is really serving a lot of use. Like the Katati Village one example out there on the edge of town, it's a big site. They can generally make things work, but some of the smaller infill lots like nine oh two East Katati Avenue that we, you know, that's a cottage housing project. That's a challenging one to thread a needle with.
So I generally agree with what you're saying, but I don't feel like we have the list to be able to decide we know height and and open space you just pointed out. But are there others that we don't want to give up? I don't feel like we have a total list here.
I just provided the ones that are most common, the city's objective design standards that we adopted and worked on our, it would be the list. And sorry, I did not provide that.
But the list that you provided, I know we had requested in August, I think we had requested, like, can you come back with what are the most commonly requested concessions? And that's that's the list of that, right?
Yes, but I think Councilmember Harvey's point, I didn't drill into some of the architectural things. Because it's like, I don't want to meet this bump out here or let me reduce my landscaping by a couple percentage points. And then also, it's relatively limited in how many examples we have, just because we haven't had that many projects come through yet.
So then is what you're saying, it's just height?
Well, I think what I'm saying is strategically, right now, they can have all of it, you know? They can have all the concessions that they want. So if we want to, if there are some that we want to prioritize, we can we can add those in. I mean, for me, I think it would be height and maybe some limit on how much open space can be reduced. Like not completely waived away, but maybe partially waived away or something like that.
But to your point, they can go the state route and just say, no, we're not going to do any open space as a concession. So I mean, right, they're, yeah, so they're all kind of like that, right?
Well, that's true. And so what we're trying to do is figure out, can we make our program attractive enough via that calculation you made? Because we're not proposing to change the twenty five percent to thirty percent. So we're saving them some total units they have to build in exchange for spreading them in a way that meets our arena allocation and honoring some limit on height and or and perhaps some limit on reduction of open space. So I, I mean, never know until you try it whether it's attractive enough to developers to to go our route instead of the state program. But I think it's worth a try.
And the state's not done either.
Yeah, true, that's right.
Clearly.
So one just sort of general question, like I get that we want to have what's built meet arena needs directly, right? But do we want to be incenting fewer units? Overall, because I'm hearing like what you were giving that the difference was the affordable housing would go from twenty four units to twenty. And do we want to be incenting that?
It's a good question. So the so under state density bonus law, the primary incentive is to build very low income. And then now, under this new formula, to build moderate. So right now, I'm concerned with who's going to build the low income, the middle category. So trying to create some nudge to get people to do that middle category, I think is an important thing to incentivize. Even if overall, we might get four less units out of a large project using Councilmember Harvey's example.
Okay, because we because the four units that would be subtracted would not be in areas that are needed. Is that the idea?
That's that's the idea.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Is it correct that that overbuilding at a lower affordability level helps fill the next bucket up? I thought I thought you got to count upwards, not downwards.
I think you do, once you like, once you meet all of very low income, I think you would be able to get into low income. I'd have to look at the the arena formula, but part of the process too is they did a they did a subcategory for very low and included extremely low. So we have a, we were supposed to build sixty very low income units, which are people who make fifty percent of the median income or less, families and people. But half of those sixty, thirty of them are supposed to be extremely low income. And that I frankly don't see us really getting many of those units because that's basically supported housing. That's very, very low income levels. And almost nobody builds that because there's there's, if it's not government subsidy, you're not going to, you're not going to get much of that. Our one twenty East Katati Avenue project, you know, she had, you might remember her presentation. She had an idea of a way to get some of those units likely included in her project. That's where we're basically, we bought the land, right? So without significant subsidy, I don't see we're allowed to get some of those units. And so to your point, I don't know how that would all factor into this up counting versus down counting and all that. It's it gets fairly complicated.
Fair enough. And and I do actually think the arena allocation has some methodology to say that's actually the need, right? It's not just a counting game, it's actually that's what the community needs too, so.
So put another way, Ben, I think what I hear you guys saying is that in your example of sixty that we have in the very low half being, if we don't do the very, very low, we don't get to count any extra we get into the low section if we didn't complete the very, very extreme.
I just don't know, I just don't know if we would or not.
Okay, that's scary.
And you know, to your point, to Professor Ford's point that that, you know, if we overbuild the very low, people who are low income won't qualify for that housing. So even if we can count it for arena, there's going to be low income people who still have nothing that meets their need. So it'd be good to build out all the categories. Okay, yes.
Well, I'll just say I'm I'm in favor of of introducing this ordinance. And I would probably insert the word proportionally in the the seventeen point thirty two language, just to make it clear what's meant. I'm perhaps still there's some technical question there about when you're actually reviewing a plan, are you counting units that are already in the pipeline when you're computing the current need? Or is it everything past building permit that you're counting as already built anyway? But I don't think that has to go in the code, it's just a technical thing you'll have to figure out.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just, the the main thing that I want to make sure is, or just from what I've heard, the accepting is the no more than three stories. You know, or thirty thirty five feet, because I think it really, I mean, I keep hearing the feathering, right? People keep talking about feathering. And, you know, the idea that it's dense in town and as it goes further out, that it becomes less and less and less dense. And I've been hearing a lot about that, you know, housing complex that's coming in in West Katati, right? A lot about that. And how is how is that feathering, right, kind of thing? And I'm like, so I think the height is really important, especially as it goes out to the further edges of Katati and not like in the very center. But even in the very center, people don't want tall buildings, they don't want skies, you know, keep hearing about skyscrapers. I'm like, we're talking about three stories, right? So, you know, as much as we can, everything I've heard is they want two, right? So I talk about the third is, you know, set back, so you won't see it. And, you know, and they're like, oh, you know, look very skeptically and, you know, we'll see kind of thing. So I already feel like thirty five is high. So if we can just say, you know, have that be a designated exception. I think I know, I'm sure builders will not be happy about it, but I think it's an important thing to hold on to for our density bonus.
Does thirty five feet cover three stories?
Yeah, thirty five feet is three story.
Okay.
Yes, I remember.
Well, I just want to reiterate, I think if we if we say just a hard thirty five, then then nobody will do this program. There's no reason to do our program instead of the state program where there's no height limit. So I think a height limit that's tied to the underlying zoning, like fifteen feet above the underlying zoning would would accomplish that feathering you were talking about. It would mean lower limits as you move into lower density zones. And and would allow some flexibility for one more story than the underlying zoning allows. And because we're trying to trying to thread a needle, how do we get some some influence on projects that happen in town? Only way to do it is to make our program more attractive to developers than than the state density bonus program. And I think even a, you know, just a fifteen foot bump on the the underlying zoning makes it questionable, like some projects will just say, okay, I can't do that. I'm going to the state project and building five stories instead. And so, you know, to me, having the ability to maybe limit some to four versus five or six is worth it. But if, you know, if the council decides we want to hold firm at three and let everybody go with the state program and build six, then we can do that.
How many feet would we need to give one more story? Fifteen seems like a lot.
So that's a good question. So I think, I mean, it's minimum ten feet per per floor. But then you get to architectural interest. Our, this is to the question earlier, our objective design guidelines push people to do peaked roofs, not flat roofs. So then if you have ten foot per per story plus a peaked roof, plus you want the ground floor to be at fifteen feet so it can be commercial and have restaurants, then you start to get, right, there's just a lot of factors.
But if we added fifteen per your suggestion, that they could conceivably, so that would be for, that would be fifty, they could do five stories.
Well, they would have to meet the architectural requirements of a pitched roof, so.
Unless they waived the pitch roof.
And that's, yeah, so I mean, that's the thing. So but yes, if fifteen feet would give a maximum potential of fifty feet, another way to do it could be four floors.
Four floors, okay.
And then it's not a height thing, it's it's.
But then it's not tied to the underlying district either.
That's correct.
That's a problem. So four stories in a low density.
That's correct.
What about, what about four stories or ten feet higher than the underlying density? Whatever they want, or whichever is less, I guess, yeah.
So wait, you're saying tie that to the zoning?
Well.
Because otherwise you could have four stories next door to me, right?
Okay, so whatever, yeah, whatever is whatever is less. So increasing by ten feet would give you exactly one more story higher than whatever's allowed in the zoning. But then the four, the the four stories would make it so, you know, if you are following all the architectural guidelines and have commercial on the first floor, you'd still be able to do four stories and build it the way we like it to look.
Which is why the thirty five feet, because that gives them the five feet for that roof pitch, right? So ten per story plus.
Yeah.
I mean, potentially, you could also just say one floor above the base, you know, height, whatever the zone is. I mean, I guess you run the risk of different height floors and what the total.
I think that's a little unclear, because then you like the the base, if the base zoning just gives a height limit, it doesn't necessarily specify the number of stories, right?
It's it is a per, it's a height.
It's a height, yeah.
Not a story.
Yeah.
Two stories.
Yeah. So what about the lesser of ten feet above the underlying zoning or four stories?
And that's allowing four stories like next to Larsson's?
No, it would be whatever's. Well, yeah.
It would, because that's a, that's a, that's a commercial corridor, so it has kind of more dense zoning, although it's not built that way now. That's how those projects got approved out there. But also their density bonus, so they can do whatever they want, but.
Yeah, I'm not seeing what the additional complication of four stories or is adding. I don't see why, like, if we want to not not make it possible to do five stories, then then make it, you know, ten or twelve feet instead of fifteen above the underlying zoning. And that would keep the the thirty five foot zones to four four floors for sure at max. And then down as you go outward from there, you know, into into lower density zones.
What is the height limit in most of our zones? I just don't know.
Thirty five feet.
For most of the.
Thirty five, it's a majority, like.
Majority?
Yeah. Downtown actually allows more, like the where the hotel is built, you could go to fifty.
Which means that it could be.
And we actually approved a tiny bit for the elevator shaft or something a little higher on that, right?
Right.
But a majority is thirty, like East Katati Avenue is thirty five feet. One sixteen is thirty five feet.
What about all, you know, kind of, which is what she's, all the rural areas, is that all thirty five?
No, that's so once you get out of single family zoning, so rural residential or any of that, it gets, I'd have to look it up, but it's less.
I think it's still thirty five. And it's weird how it's measured because we ended up behind us with a extremely large building.
McMansion.
Well, they measure from the top of the hill, not the bottom, weird thing like that. So they ended up with a whole extra floor.
And there's some McMansions behind my house too. But I think they're just three stories. They're just really wide.
We could just say not to exceed four stories and list out the zones and not to exceed three stories and list out the other zones. You know, like just bifurcate the the height limit depending on the zone.
I guess I don't see why why we want to rewrite the height limits in terms of stories instead of feet. I'm not getting it. What are we?
I think the the fear is that by saying ten or like by saying a certain number of feet, it could end up with a bigger building than we're in today, like a five story building could be possible.
And reducing the idea of the feathering out, that's really what, you know, I'm trying to avoid is the four story building next to a two story house.
So rural residential, residential very low density and neighborhood low density, which is like the bird section, those are all twenty eight feet, actually.
So ten additional feet would still not make four stories possible.
And yeah, and neighborhood medium is even twenty eight feet, which that's surprising to me.
No, twenty eight plus ten would still make three, three stories.
Three stories, not four, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said three, okay.
Yeah, so I'm inclined to just go back to our original and say fifteen feet with the.
I'd rather do ten. I don't want to give a fifty, sixty feet and end up with a six story. Or thirty five, forty five, you're gonna, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I'm worried of in some of these lower heights that ten, people look at the ten feet, that's not going to let them build the fourth story. So they'll just say, okay, we're just going to use the state program.
On the thirty five, that gives them forty five.
But I'm hearing from Noah that a bunch of these zones are actually twenty eight.
Those are the lower density areas, where it's more single family neighborhoods. We're not likely to see projects proposing density bonus in those types of.
Or they might be like.
Down houses to do that, right?
And it's just, it's just also, it's less, density bonus is mainly used for multifamily housing. And so, you know, the the market for single family homes, like the project we had down the Flahaven Estates, that's not a density bonus project, he didn't want, he wanted the single family lots, the, you know, the six thousand square foot. Because that's the market for that product.
Didn't you say that the neighborhood medium is twenty eight feet though? Neighborhood medium has a height limit of twenty eight?
Yes.
I mean, because I could imagine trying to see seeing density bonus projects in neighborhood medium infill sites, so.
Well, also like the cottage, right? Like, like the areas even like outside of town where they have more space that they might want to do the little, you know, the smaller, like six little houses rather than one big one. Right?
Possible.
Yeah.
So the cottage housing, you're allowed to. So the cottage housing, you're allowed to do double your density as a cottage housing project as a separate process.
And that, and that would not allow for four-story buildings?
Oh, no.
In a cottage?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I guess, I feel like three-story, so as you move out into less dense areas, the land typically costs less per acre. And the, the reason for the density need is largely the land costs. And so I think three-story in neighborhood medium is reasonable to probably be able to accomplish some, some density bonus projects. So I'm willing to try the 10 feet. If we, if we see that a bunch of people are coming through saying, I can't use your program, I'm going to use the state, then maybe come back to us and tell us, tell us what's holding it up or something like that. I don't know, it'd be my preference.
I'm just thinking if a, if a mixed-use project in a neighborhood medium wanted to have commercial, you said 15 feet for a first-floor commercial? Is that what they?
Typically, that's what you need to have a restaurant.
Okay, so if a mixed-use project wanted to be three stories, they'd need 15 plus 10 plus 10 gets you to 35 and then like a few feet for the roof to be pointy. So, so 38 feet would give you three feet for the roof. It's just cutting out a little bit, a little bit close. But I'm okay with going, trying that, yeah.
I mean, I'd be, it still doesn't, it's up to the third zones, which is one of the.
Can we try 10 for a year? And if we don't get any, then we can, or, or it can always come back to us if you start seeing some and, and you find that they, you know, a couple more feet, we can always adjust the ordinance, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I would push for 10.
Okay.
Begrudgingly.
All right, well, I'm good with trying that. And then, you know, I, since he said that open space was one that's often requested, I'm, you know, I'd like to see some of that preserved. But again, I, I'm just worried that if we keep that in there, then just won't use it, so.
I, I do think, you know, part of the commission's direction has come back in a year. We have some applicants talking to us right now. I mean, they're just, they're actively looking at this as an option to design projects. So we will get real-life, you know, feedback applied. We'll have an option to kind of tighten it up a bit as we work through it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, on, on page, what is it, 98? You have some of the common incentives and concessions, but this is not a complete list. It's just some of the most common ones.
Those are the most common ones, I, I, yes.
Okay, but the parking lot and lot coverage, I already kind of dealt with in other laws.
That's correct.
Okay.
So what are people thinking about the, the number of waivers? I tend to think two is probably too small, like if they can have unlimited.
Yeah, I think we should not designate how many at all.
Agreed.
We should just say what our exception is of the 10 feet and then leave it open for as many as they want to ask for.
Yep.
So, so it's not, it's not technically, they can just, I'm, I'm, I know practically it's sort of that, but technically they have to justify that a waiver or a concession that they're asking for is needed to make the project financially viable, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I thought we had to do that. They don't have to do.
No, we have to prove that their statement is a lie if we want to deny it. So, so they, they have to say, I need this to make the project viable. And if we don't want to grant the waiver, then we have to prove they're wrong.
Which we can't because we don't have their data.
Right, right. So unscrupulous developers for sure could.
We've never had any of those, Ben.
So that's why I say practically, I get it, that for staff, it's an unlimited number. You just ask for it and you get it. But technically, that's not quite what's going.
Yeah, if they ask for something really out of line, we could support a case that that's not really. If they said, oh, this, this needs to be 12 stories or we can't make it work financially, we could say there's, that's not true, you know?
Or we just say, okay, it won't work then, we'll go with someone else. 12 stories.
No, that's the option we don't have.
Yeah.
We have to prove that they could make it work in order to deny it. We can't just say, no, you can't have that. So that's with the state and, and with this, if we make this unlimited, except for things that we specifically say you can't use a waiver on, like, you know, if you, if you use a waiver for height, it can be for at most 10 feet above the underlying zoning district. Is that, that's the kind of way we'd say it, is that right?
Yes, I have to think about the language, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Generally in that, yeah.
Well, we spent like a ton of time coming up with these objective design guidelines. Are we now saying that we're just willing to give those up because they can say we don't like those? That's a question.
Yeah, I mean, my take on it is that they already have the right to do, to waive them, you know? So they, they already can.
Well, they have the right to waive them for.
Yeah.
For financial viability reasons, not because they don't like them technically. You keep looking at me skeptically. And I get it.
Yeah.
And I get it, but they, they at least have to be able to make a reasonable case that waiving this design standard will save us money in this way and thus enable the project to be viable. And if it's just nonsense, then we can at least say that's nonsense. You know, buying one-by-threes versus one-by-fours doesn't actually save you money in a significant way, so.
But, but does it, Ben, if we, if we take that out and they get unlimited, do we ever get the opportunity to say?
Yeah, we do, we do, because they submit, because they have to make the case to us that, that whatever they're, they're waiving is necessary for the viability of the project. And we, as I think Director House has said, it's like to actually support a case if they pushed it would be difficult. But if it's just nonsense, then I assume we'll tell them that's nonsense.
Well, I will say, the Cotati density bonus doesn't live in anywhere in state law. So it's, I mean, it is, like, you will be granting it, even though we wrote it to say shall be granted, it's still, the council's the one doing it. A project has to come to you and ask for this. We're writing this certainty into the code so developers are interested and incentivized to use it. But you could deny it if there was some nonsense elements to the project. The developer doesn't have a right to this.
Could, could we put some language in, or maybe it's already in there, I don't know, to just say like that the waivers shall be granted consistent with California, just to, like, consistent with California density bonus law?
Yeah, that's.
That's already how it's, how it's written. Okay, okay, so it's not, they don't just get them, they, they still have to justify them the same way they would for the state density bonus, okay.
And those lovely design guidelines that we put in place, is it referenced anywhere just so they know what, you know?
Oh, yeah, that's absolutely.
Okay, so like when the developer comes in, they know what we're looking for and then they decide what of that they want, they wish to follow, right? At least they had, they're aware of what it is we would like to see, which I think is something.
So if I understand you guys correctly, we don't have, they can come in, but we don't have to grant this? It's our discretion to grant this, or do they just get this?
So we're writing it in a way that says the city shall, or the council shall give it to them. So again, it gets back to, do we want to make it a certainty or do we want to make it purely discretionary?
But, but does it actually come to the council? Or is it, you know, we get caught up in this whole ministerial thing that if they meet this, this, and this, you just have to sign off on it?
So the project would be a discretionary project under design review. It's required to come. Design review is decided by the planning commission. Staff has always intended this to be a council-level action. But if the council doesn't want that or wants to, you know, I mean, this is, you can tell me how to write it, but it's, we're in this odd world where we're trying to provide certainty because there's lots of certainty through this other path. So it says shall grant. So it's saying that the council will grant it subject to these criteria.
But if it has to come to council, doesn't that take away that certainty? Which I know you keep trying to put in there because it has to come here.
Madam Mayor, can I, can I just make a quick point? If it says shall and they meet all the criteria, you have to grant it. You could say no, but they could also sue you and force you to issue the permit, right? So the way the density bonus law is designed, that's how it's, that's how it works, right? If somebody meets all the criteria and you say no, then they could sue you and force you to issue the permit. The way Noah drafted the Cotati density bonus, I think I have this right and what you're saying, correct. It's set up the same way the state law is set up, right? But you could change it so it's more discretionary because it's your density bonus. It's not a state one, so you could, you could tweak the language a little bit.
And also, you're the one, it's set up to where the council's the one making the call about whether the project does all of these things. So it's, the decision comes to you, so you're the one granting that extra density. But it, the code is written in a way that says you're going to do it as long as they're pulling their side of the, the expectations.
And, and if we don't do that, then they'll just go to the state, right? Because that's for sure, right? That's what we were saying before. So the point of it coming to the council is for us to just congratulate them, like, you know?
Well, let me, let me ask a clarifying question that I think will help with this. I mean, the current, the current process is if somebody utilizes the California state density bonus, that still comes to council, right? Or does it not?
It wouldn't always. So the last two projects we've had did, and our code, this is also part of the code cleanup we did. The code previously said that the council grants all density bonuses. The state had says, no, you can't do that. But other elements of the projects we've had have required council approval. Tree removal of an oak tree requires the city council to approve the project, which means all other parts of the project come to the council. That's how our code works. It says if any piece has to write, raise up in any decision, the whole project goes as a package.
Sure, just lucky.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be, I would be in favor of trying to design this ordinance so that anytime a California density bonus project would be ministerial, that the Cotati density bonus would also be ministerial because that, that would truly provide the, the same level, equal level of certainty to them, yeah.
But the, the projects aren't the same projects, right? You're designing a different project if you're designing to meet our project because you've got a different unit mix, probably different total number of units, given the, the, well, I don't know, maybe the same number, but a different unit mix of very low, low, and moderate. So it's not like you can come to the city, try your project with us and then, then decided, we somehow decided it doesn't work and then, then take it to the state. There'll be a lot of redesign involved, so it's, they're not exactly equivalent. I think there does have to be some, you know, some reason for them to come work with us and an expectation that if they do meet our standards, meet whatever we say the standards are, that they will be approved, unless they're trying to pull a fast one, you know?
Yeah, I think though, from what I know from talking to developers, if they're presented with a choice and one of the choices is a ministerial approval, that saves them a huge amount of money because even though we can look at our code and say, we're going to approve this, it says shall, their finance, their bank is not necessarily going to see it that way. Their bank will see it as this has to go through a discretionary process and therefore it's not as certain, we're going to charge you a somewhat higher interest rate. It's going to take longer, so they're financing things for longer. I think that those factors could tip somebody like that if they can do a ministerial process, they're just going to choose that.
But just to be, to be clear, all, any new development will require a discretionary process because design review is required no matter what for any new construction.
Okay, but you just said the density bonus, some of the California density bonus wouldn't come to council.
Yeah, it doesn't come, that doesn't mean it's discretionary. It's not discretionary, it still has to go to the planning commission, still goes through public hearing process. It just doesn't, the Cotati City Council is used to being the final decision-maker on almost all projects. What I'm saying is there will be lower level or large projects that are decided at the planning commission that have no need to come to city council. That will happen.
Okay, so I, I guess what I'm saying is I'd like to see the processes just equalized. So whatever they're going to, whatever level of certainty is going to be afforded to them by the California law, I think if we don't offer the same level of certainty, they won't choose our density.
I hear you. And right now, the way this is written, the only place where it says city council is that it says the council is the one who grants this because it says the city council shall grant up to 100% residential density bonus. So we could change that to city if the, that's.
I would be in favor of changing that to the city, the city shall grant it and then it would follow whatever, if they had to remove an oak tree, it would come to council. And if not, it wouldn't, same as the California. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree. And the other thing I'm thinking about is the time that requires them to come and do their presentations and like, because that's money, right? Like whoever those consultants are, the people in that company, like it could actually save quite a bit of money to not have to do that additional step of coming to us.
All right, any other thoughts about that?
Only, only one. I mean, I, I think that when you said that they would jump to the state one if it, if it offered more, I think if the envelope, if you will, had the moderate and the very low for them to kind of change that mix, I don't think that that's like as big a deal. I don't think that they have to reconfigure as much to, to change kind of the affordability level. And it's kind of just the boxes there. It's probably what kind of goes in the box.
I'm comfortable changing that to the city shall. I would propose kind of an in-between on concessions or waivers rather than just unlimited. It's like maybe shall be entitled to four incentives concessions or waivers and may request additional or something like that, that there's a discretionary process for additional waivers for that sort of they get by writing, sort of, I'm probably using the term wrong, but they get just like they would with the California. And I don't, I don't know if four is the right number, two feels too small. But I understand also what, sort of what the scope of a waiver concession is, still feels unsettled to me. Like, can they use one waiver and say, I waive your development standards? That feels a little broad to me. So I'm, I just don't know what the scope of a waiver is. And I don't know whether that's, like you said, that's partly staff interpretation. Is this five waivers or one when they say I'm waiving chapter 17. whatever? So.
There's a whole, I could send you a whole legal primer on it, but again, I think it's just interpretation. It's not settled law, like it hasn't gone through the courts.
I'm just, so if the, if the intention of this is to make it equal, as equal as possible to the state one, the state has unlimited. So I feel like if we limit it, we're already limiting it with the 10 feet over. I feel like any other limitations we put on it is just making it less and less attractive and making them take it less and less frequently, which is, we want them to take it. So I, I would argue against limiting what is not limited in the state.
I mean, we're not trying to make them equal. We're trying perhaps to make them equally attractive, but not the same program. And so if we, if we don't limit concessions, waivers at all, except by height, then what we're saying is we're, we're, like, it's, it's still worth, worth it to us to do that because we think that the RENA-based mix of affordable units is, is worth it together with the height limit. Like, those two things would be what we'd get out of it, but, but nothing more.
Exactly.
Okay, and so we just got to decide, is, is that enough for us to, to get in exchange for them having to build fewer units, 5% fewer affordable units?
Or do we also want to try to get them to follow our design guidelines more closely by leaving it to a certain number of waivers?
Right, I mean, I agree with you. They are getting something by taking ours. It's, you know, four less units in the example that we had. So that has money and value to them to do, to do that. So making it a give and take, I think we should get something for that give.
Yeah, I think of the RENA mix, that they have more options with the RENA mix, then that makes it a viable program. Otherwise, just go with the state, like I was in agreement with what Councilman, Councilmember Rivers was saying.
So, well, I'm just going to throw out a proposal there and see, see what you guys think. What if we, we say? What if we, we say limit of five waivers or concessions or incentives? If a height limit is, if a height waiver is requested, then it, no more than 10 feet and, and change it to city instead of city council? Does that sound acceptable to people? Or do we want to make changes to that?
Yeah, I, I still think unlimited. If the state is unlimited, I think ours should be too, with the exception of the height and the Rena.
I, I agree with that.
I'd rather have at least some guardrails on it. We are giving them, we're, we're giving them 5%.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with council member Harvey. I think that the, that five, five concessions, waivers, incentives, limit, sounds like it's in the right ballpark. And I think that, I mean, this may come down to a packaging issue. Like how do you package, you know, what you're asking for? And, and staff determination on what counts as one waiver versus three or incentive or whatever. But I still think something that encourages developers to try to meet our standards is worth it. Like we put a lot of work into those and, and they matter to me. So to just say, do whatever you want, kind of bugs me.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm kind of thinking that I like the planning commission's suggestion to come back a year from now and evaluate this. So since we're kind of going with the more conservative 10 feet, if we went with the more conservative five waivers and then just see how that works, I'd be comfortable with that and come back a year from now. And if people are not using it because the waivers aren't working, let's get rid of them to make it more attractive.
That's cool. Is a year too long? Do we need to look at it sooner than that? I, I guess you have the discretion to come back to us if you have 10 people coming in your door and they're all going.
Yeah.
Then.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I think a year is a good amount of time for right now. And then if, if there's a need, if we have three developers who are like, I need one more waiver, you know, we, we can.
Okay.
Put something together.
Okay.
Okay. Oh God, where's the motion? You're ready?
No, I was just gonna, we never talked about 17.31, but I'm fine with all the changes in 17.31.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, I'm happy to make a motion. Okay. Let's see. Oh, shoot, that's the wrong, that's the title of the, now I gotta get to it. Okay. Happy to, I moved that we introduced an ordinance to the council of the city of Katati, amending chapter 17.31 Affordable Housing Requirement and 17.32 Density Bonuses of the Katati Municipal Code to Establish Consistency with Changes in State Density Bonus Law, Create a Katati-Specific Density Bonus, remove the extra E on that word, and Implement the City's Local Preference Policy. With, there was one change we made about the resale price and the edits we just made to 17.32. Were those the only edits?
Yes. And are you clear on the, the edits that we made?
Okay. Did we end up with proportionality in there? Is that, okay. Yeah.
I'll second. Okay, no, you're good. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that passes unanimously. All right, that takes us to our last item, which is the fee deferral. And is it 10 o'clock already? We have to make a finding at 11, whether to continue, right? We changed, we changed it, right? Or is it 10? I think it's 11.
I think it got moved to 11.
Didn't it?
Oh, we moved it back?
When we, when we moved the start time back to six.
Should we just do it just to do?
Okay, let's just do this one. It's not 10 o'clock yet anyway, so. Fee deferral agreement with Noel and Lisa Kirby of Darrell Developments LLC requesting a fee to save with the development of 902 East Katati Avenue.
So briefly, as the mayor identified, this is a fee to referral agreement. Our cow, our code currently says that only the council can grant fee to referral agreements. However, recent changes in state law has said we have to grant these. And so our code is just out of step with state law. It's one of the changes we haven't gotten to yet. Staff is not comfortable acting on this in conflict with the code. You will not see any more of these, I'm telling you. Our housing element also tells us to grant automatic fee deferrals. But again, because of the conflicts, we weren't comfortable. I did want to identify that the, what's attached may have some slight changes. We may need to update the fees slightly. The resolution gives the city manager authority to do that. And also just highlight the fact that our first cottage housing project, which is 902 East Katati Avenue, is moving forward. I'm not sure if Lisa is still on the line.
She is.
Oh, thank you so much for waiting patiently. But we are recommending approval. We did not identify any significant financial considerations, given the changes in the state law. One kind of interesting nuance, we are recommending all fees be deferred or including all fees be deferred except to occupancy of the building, except it's also for utility connections or when they apply for their utility connection. So that has a little bit of nuance. But with that, I'm available for any questions. And Lisa is also available on the line if, if need be.
Does anyone have any questions?
She's been promoted to a panelist in case there are any questions.
Any questions? Lisa, I just want to say I'm sorry for keeping you here, here so late. We probably should have moved your item up earlier and I'm, I'm sorry about that.
No worries, appreciates.
Okay, so if there are no questions, we're going to open it up to public comment. Can we go to Zoom for public comment, please?
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Once again, speaking to our Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon if you'd like to make a public comment on this item. Seeing no hands, that will end public comment on Zoom.
All right, is there anyone in the chambers? Seeing nobody come up. All right, I'll open it up back up to the council. Any further discussion on this or a motion?
I'd make a motion adopting a resolution approving, approving a fee deferral agreement to allow portions of the permit and impact fees for an approved development at 902 East Katati Avenue to be deferred from building permit issuance to building permit final occupancy.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passed 5-0. Thank you. Okay, so we did check and the, the limit is 11.
It is 11, yeah. We spoke, we, we talked about 10, but I guess we ended up at 11.
Okay, so we'll just try to finish this up. So can we please move on to the city manager's report?
Yeah, so thank you, mayor, members of the councils. All, I will just touch on some high points to keep it brief tonight. Holiday toy drive will be starting up shortly, so look for that. If you, if anybody wants to donate or know people that want to donate toys for children in need this holiday season. The police department, as well as Rancho Adobe Fire, is accepting toys for children as well as gift cards, which can be delivered at the police station or the fire station downtown. The sidewalk gap project is just moving along on the west side. Hopefully in the next week it'll be done. You know, weather, weather allowing. The Putnam Park project is quiet right now, but if you've been out to the site, they've set up out there and they're working through some mittles. So that's going to be moving forward soon. The Santero Way specific plan draft DIR is out. It's in the 45-day public review period with comments due by December 16th. So if anyone's interested in that, take a look. The council will be, at least the plan right now is the council will be seeing that, the updated plan in January at some point. And then we're also, community development staff is holding a neighborhood meeting to discuss the 120 East Katati Affordable Housing Development Project next Wednesday. And then the council should be seeing that on December 10th at the council meeting. So you'll see that Free Bird project that we're partnered with. Also tomorrow, just so you know, there's a, developers holding a, a, a public meeting here for the Lasker Lane project. So there's, at least in that neighborhood, there's a fair amount of interest about that project. So I'm sure you'll be hearing more about it. There's a program that I've talked to you about once before called Keeping People Housed Rental Assistance. And so this is a new program that provides free financial assistance and legal support to eligible households. Whether you need help with rent, utilities, eviction notices or other emergency needs, Keep People Housed is, is a potential source of assistance. And it's, for us in South County, you have to contact COTS. This is the Committee on the Shelter List in Petaluma. Or you can go to wwwkeeppeoplehoused.org. There's also a phone number that we're going to be pushing this information out, but it's, COTS was successful in securing a big grant, which is paying for this, at least, you know, while the grant's available. And then for recreation, we're, we're currently registering people for Thanksgiving and winter breaks camp, winter break camps if children need that while school's out. Friday, December 6th, we have our annual tree lighting event in La Plaza from 4 to 8. And the following day, Saturday, December 7th, is the, is the shop and stroll holiday event downtown in our, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in our downtown. The following weekend, we have our Sold Out Breakfast with Santa, which almost sells out immediately when we put it up. And then December 21 is a drop and shop event. So it's different than shop and stroll. Shop and stroll is when people go shopping. Drop and shop is you're dropping your child and then you're shopping. So it's a last minute kind of pre-Christmas opportunity to shop if you need to get out and need some childcare. That's from 10 to 3 p.m. And then I will just leave it at that to keep it brief tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to confirm the time for the holiday tree lighting. Did you say four to six?
Four, four to eight.
Four to eight.
In La Plaza, yep, December 6th.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our city council member reports. Does anyone have a report to share? Yes, go ahead.
Sure. November 1st, I went to Regional Parts Foundation Board Meeting. November 7th, Sunamaklin Power Meeting. At the meeting, there was a K Street Consulting Presentation with Goals for Tribal Engagement Efforts. Tribal consultant is going to work on how to engage local native communities. We recommended they work with the Progressive Tribal Alliance. We also received a presentation providing input on guidelines to inform drafting of future policy on selecting energy products, projects. CC Power is a group that works on how to, how to work on selecting energy resources while supporting workers, communities and the environment. But they also recognize that CCs have their own boards and that they have to, that they have to approve. So staff is coming to us for guidance on this draft. There's Coalition on Clean Power Alliance that wrote a joint letter with input from the, with input into the guidelines to support local jobs, local people, adding prevailing wage language. So we requested staff to meet with the alliance to see what is feasible to add to the guidelines and to bring comparisons side by side of what other CCs are doing regarding this. We also requested a request, which I'll send to city manager to consider a platform item to support a geothermal opportunity site or the zone to add it maybe to our platform. So I'll send that on to city manager. And I went to the, today to the chamber, Katati Chamber Meeting. And just to add to what city manager said is that December 12th is the Chamber Crawl, which will start at Flagship Tap Room. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I'll keep it short. I attended the LAFCO meeting on the 6th of November and we reviewed the municipal service review and spear of influence study for Gold Ridge, Monarrio and the city of Sebastopol. So we are slowly but surely moving towards more fire consolidation. So we, the MSR was approved and probably within the next six months or so, Gold Ridge will be submitting an application to bring Monarrio and the city of Sebastopol under their purview, so.
All right, any reports over here?
I just had one meeting since our last meeting was the Measure O Oversight Committee on which I represent the cities. We approved the annual audited financial reports. And I'll just mention that the big concern with Measure O that some people have talked about is one, one concern is, is ensuring that the money is getting out there where it's needed. And in this last, the last year, spending basically matched income. They're up to full speed pretty much at getting the money out there to programs. Another topic of conversation will continue to be partnerships with the cities and making sure that, that that funding that's collected by the county on behalf of everybody, including our, our residents, funds our programs as well.
Do you have a report?
Okay, my report, I attended the Water Advisory Committee. The two most important things we heard about was the, we had a capital projects update and they're going to be recoding the other very large tank in Katati. And apparently the foundation is a little off-center, so they're going to completely redo the foundation, which is huge because it's the size of two football fields. And then re, recoat the interior of the tank. So that's going to be in 2025, 2026. That will be happening. And then there was a presentation. This will be coming to LAFCO that they're, a group is proposing to create an Alexander Valley Water District. And so they came and gave a, gave us a presentation. They want to be able to formally participate in some of these discussions about the Potter Valley project. Anyway.
Yes, they do.
You'll be seeing more of that. And then I attended the mayor's committee council on Employment of Peoples with Disabilities. Breakfast, awards breakfast. And Walgreens in Katati received an award. And an employee at Walgreens in Katati, who is a participant in their work programs, received an award. So I used my discretion as mayor to invite them to our next meeting to just have a five-minute presentation about the awards they received and, and honor them in Katati since they received those awards. It was really nice. It was a really great, great thing. That's my whole report. Okay, so that takes us to, we're going to do two public comments in rapid succession. So first, we're going to do public comment on non-action agenda items. I don't see anyone in the chambers wishing to comment, so we'll go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor Sparks. Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment. Lori, we see your hand. You have the floor. Lori, we see your hand, you have the floor.
Damian really needs to be honest about how the street project sidewalk gap closure is going. He sent me an email today saying he's taking, by the stop sign that was two feet into our property, the right-of-way is now five feet, according to him. And you've, and so you're taking five feet of our property for about 10 yards, and then taking other ones. That wasn't enough this week. A lady got, a week ago, because you narrowed the road, the, the elderly lady was almost hit right in front of me on Maple Avenue because you have sidewalk work on both sides of, people have to walk in the street. Public works trucks are with guys with food in one hand whipping around because there's no stop sign. You're, I just want honesty. I don't want this crap anymore. People are yelling at the crew because nobody knew on West School that anything come in. Nobody asked for it. Nobody wanted this. You guys got the money and said, oh, let's put in the sidewalks without consideration for any of us. And now you're, all I wanted was the stop sign moved. And now I've, you're taking, and there's a moat out front. It's been up to six feet uncovered. And I've done the police and nobody, I have not seen a police car out here. They said, dude, they do more traffic patrols. People are whizzing by because there's no stop sign in the new configuration. I'm just tired of this. Tell the truth. Don't butter it up that every, oh, everything's hunky-dory. It's not.
All right, thank you for your comment.
That was the last hand on Zoom. That will end the comment, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go into closed session, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation of subdivision D of section 54956.9, name of case Countryside Mobile Home Park LLC versus City of Katari, Sonoma County Superior Court Case Number 24CV00804. I'd like to open public comment on the closed session item before we go into closed session. Can we open it to Zoom?
Zoom attendees, please use the raise hand icon to make a public comment on the closed session topic. Mayor Sparks, that will end public comment.
Okay, and seeing no one in the chambers wishing to make a comment on closed session, we will go to closed session. We will come back and adjourn after we're done with that.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. We have nothing to report out of closed session. Was there any information received after the agenda was posted?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sparks. There were two items submitted in regards to the public hearing, item 11A. Those were uploaded to the HTML agenda and are here in the chamber tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned.